Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanez.
Mrs. Ziarco.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will, just on behalf of Councilman Yen, as I want to let you know, he's not here. He's doing well. He's healthy, but he had an exposure to somebody who subsequently tested positive. And so, out of an abundance of caution, he has been tested. He's awaiting results, so he's self-isolating and quarantining until he gets those results. But he did want me to pass along that he's watching from home and he's feeling healthy and he is hoping for the best, obviously. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. And actually, before we do that, I want to thank everybody who's in the audience here tonight for wearing your masks in here. You're going to see the city council is going to be wearing their masks at times when we're not speaking, and we appreciate your compliance and your efforts to keep the people here around you safe, and we certainly do appreciate that. So with that, Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let me begin by providing an update on some information that the city council requested a couple of meetings ago. During a recent discussion regarding appointments of boards and commissions, it was determined that the planning commission members can only sit on the planning commission and not on any other board or commission within the city. The exception is that one member may also sit on the zoning board of appeals. Pursuant to the inquiry from city council on best practices for what our comparable communities ordinances and policies are for their planning commission members, being able to sit on multiple boards and commissions, we conducted a review of many of these communities, as well as a few additional communities that also have a sustainability commission or something similar. We sampled not only our typical comparable communities, but, as I mentioned, these others for more insight, and the vast majority of all the communities that we surveyed do not prohibit their planning commission members from serving on multiple boards and commissions. Based on the sampling, the city would be in line with similar communities by allowing members to serve on multiple boards. Therefore, it's the office of planning's recommendation that the city amend its stance on limiting the ability of planning commission members to sit on additional boards and commissions and simply indicate in the ordinance that the commission must abide by applicable state statutes. The ability for members to sit on additional boards and commissions allows these members to provide additional insight from a planning perspective or vice versa. For example, this is particularly true in the case of the planning commission member sitting on an additional commission such as a new sustainability commission, since many of the issues that will be handled by that commission and the planning commission will have some level of overlap. So without opposition from city council, administration will prepare the required ordinance amendment for council consideration. We hope that we can have that back to you in the very near future. And I wanted to remind residents that, I'm sure you know this by now, but tax bills just went out, and some of the lines at City Hall are very long for those who desire to pay in cash. Now, if you are not paying in cash, the lines move very quickly. So we're strongly encouraging those who have not paid and wish to pay in cash that they choose another option, and we have a number of options available. First, you can simply mail your check in the envelope enclosed with the bill. You have until September 1st to mail a check, so there's plenty of time. You can pay online through our city website, and there's no fee if you use your online checking or savings account. You can drop your check payment in one of the city's drop boxes. There's one right outside the council chambers in the circular drive, and there's also one in front of the police department. And I might also add that the city milage rate did not increase, and taxable value only increased by the inflationary amount of 1.9% for most residents. And as many might have experienced over the holiday weekend pursuant to state law and city ordinance, consumer fireworks may be discharged or used between 11:00 a.m. and 11:45 p.m. However, the state statute a few years ago reduced the number of days that can be, that the fireworks can be regulated, from 30 down to approximately 11. So the most recent timeframe was from June 29th to July 4th, and on July 5th, if that date was on a Friday or Saturday, which was the case this year. The Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day and Labor Day, so now fireworks cannot be discharged in the city until Labor Day. And then finally, there's December 31st, so those are the approximate 10, or it could be 11, days that they can be used. We generally have reasonably good compliance, but it's a really difficult statute to enforce. We do our very best. Between the Sterling Heights Fire Department and the police department, we responded to 70 calls for service. Violations were not substantiated in 55 of those calls, nine citations, and six warnings were issued. So a lot of it has subsided, but I wanted to remind residents that if they notice fireworks going off in their neighborhood, they can call the non-emergency number at 586-469-5151 to report the use of fireworks, and obviously, a police officer will be dispatched and will try and track that down and issue the necessary citations. And Mayor, I'd like to conclude my report this evening by calling up to the podium an individual that really requires no introduction, but I'll do so anyway, and that is Commissioner Joe Romano, who would like to present a very important resolution to a very important person.
Come on up, Mr. Romano.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mr. Koszywski, and Ms. Riska. Good night. I'm afraid to touch this thing. This evening, it is my honor to present this proclamation from the Macomb County Board of Commissioners to one of Sterling Heights' outstanding employee and justly deserves it, Ms. Riska. It was our city clerk. You know, this should come as no surprise, because if you Google her name, and June 25th in Macomb daily, it stated that I already made this presentation, but that was an imposter. That was not me, Joe Romano. That was somebody else. And it stated everything that I would like to give out today, but it was stated, as I said, if you Google her name, it'll all come out. But anyway, old people have to put on their glasses. Bear with me. This is an official proclamation of the Macomb Board of Commissioners of Macomb County, and it's a proclamation honoring Melanie Riska for being named the 2020 City Clerk of the Year by the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. Now, some people say, what's the big deal? Well, if you stop and think about how many cities there are in the state of Michigan, and probably, I would say, a good 80 to 90% of them belong to this association, and every one of these cities has a clerk, but our star tonight won that award and was justly given to her. So it's a proclamation honoring Melanie Riska for being named the 2020 City Clerk of the Year by the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. Myself, Joseph V. Romano, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, offers the following proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners commends Melanie Riska for exemplary contribution to public service as a Sterling Heights City Clerk, which has earned her the honor of being elected the 2020 City Clerk of the Year by the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. And whereas Melanie Riska's career in municipal government began in 2002 for the city of Amtramick, that's why she speaks Polish, where she quickly advanced in her roles before continuing on to serve her community in higher positions, one with Grosse Pointe Woods, and then with Wayne County, and then landing in her current position, role as a Sterling Heights City Clerk. And whereas through her career, Melanie Riska has been a champion and advocate for clerks across the state of Michigan, as well as an inspiring mentor to new clerks. She encourages association membership and continuing education, has been instrumental in developing innovative changes to the office through the accomplishments of many significant projects involving various tasks vital to the clerk's office and Sterling Heights community. And whereas Melanie Riska was the obvious choice for the MAMC 2020 City Clerk of the Year nomination for her impressive work ethic and leadership skills, along with her integrity, grace, positive attitude, and inspiring leadership methods which bring about inspirational change, crucial decisions-making, and effective results. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners, speaking for and on behalf of all county citizens, which included all of Sterling Heights, as follows, that by this present, the Macomb County Board of Commissioners hereby publicly acknowledges and commends Melanie Riska on the prestigious occasion of being named the 2020 City Clerk of the Year by the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. Be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this proclamation be presented to Melanie Riska in testimony of the highest esteem in which she is held by the Macomb County Board of Commissioners. And if I may, Mayor, on a side note, back approximately four years ago, when I was still on council, Mr. Vanderpoel, our city manager, in his infinite wisdom, decided to interview Ms. Riska along with other people looking for that position as city clerk, and he allowed the council at this time, which in fact, many of us were on this council at that time, to also talk with her as an interview. Well, I know I speak for myself, and I'm sure I speak for every council member that was there at the time. It didn't take us more than five minutes to realize we did have a star. He made a great choice and a great selection, and Melanie has proven that time and time again. And adding a little side note to that, her department was named the 2020 Department of the Year for the city of Sterling Heights. And I'm sure Melanie, being as humble as she is, would not say, well, it wasn't me. It was my group, my, the people that worked with me, because she is that type of person. So I commend you for that. Last time this award was given to the city of Sterling Heights, and I'm glad we're all here, are you ready for this? It was 1987, 33 years ago. So let me tell you the accomplishment that she made. So think about that. 33 years ago, we got this award, and it took us 33 years to get another one, and we got it with our star. Melanie, if you'd like to come up, I'll give you the proclamation. And we want to hear a few words from you. No, that's close enough. We've got to do the social distancing right. Since I did this for the women at the city council just a while ago, I guess I can do with you too.
Thank you. Well, oh, okay. I didn't expect to say anything. I didn't prepare anything. Oh, I have to come up here. Okay. Well, I thank you to the county board of commissioners for presenting this to me. It's very humbling to have won that prestigious award, and you know, I appreciate all the support that I get from mayor, council, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mr. Koszywski. They enable me to do my job, and then I have obviously a fantastic team, so thank you.
And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel, and thank you, Mr. Romano. Good to see you again, and thank you for that recognition from the county commissioners. Very well deserved for our clerk, Ms. Riska. Thank you. Next item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing, and this is to consider the application by FCA U.S. LLC for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate at 39600 Mitchell Drive. We have a presentation from our senior economic development advisor, Luke Bonner. Mr. Bonner.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Good evening, rest of the council, and Mr. Vanderpoel. This evening before you, there is an IFEC application from FCA USA for a $14.6 million investment at Sterling Enterprise Park. It's a 210,000 square foot sequencing facility that will employ 150 new employees. The proposed term of the abatement in the application is 10 years, which runs the length of their lease at the property. It's expected that the project will generate around $60,000 in property taxes annually to the city, another $113,000 in property taxes annually to the schools, for a total of $196,000 in new property tax revenue between the school and city, and also, over that 10-year period of time, about $1.9 million of new taxes generated for those two entities. A couple of things I just want to point out about FCA, and this is actually going back to, believe, 2009, when Shap was on the closure list, and many people here were part of that very regional effort to work with Chrysler to bring Shap back to life. And at that time, there was about a $1.4 billion investment, but the Chrysler 200 and the Shap. I think we then were very fortunate enough to win the Ram pickup truck, one of the best-selling heavy-duty pickup trucks in the market at Shap, which resulted in roughly another $1.4 billion investment. On top of that, really, at the same time, Sunnybrook Golf Course was sold for a new industrial development, and that was roughly in 2016 that that project kicked off. And if we fast forward to today, Sterling Enterprise Park has roughly $60 million in assessed industrial property, including the $14 million of investment that's going in tonight. And if we include tonight's project, the total tax yield coming out of Sterling Enterprise Park, and this is total for all tax and jurisdictions, it's going to be very close to $1 million. So FCA has been an enormous catalyst. At Shap and Stamping, they have roughly 10,000 employees total. If you look at the spin-off benefit of that using a multiplier of four, I mean, that's 40,000 indirect employees as a result of Shap and Stamping. So what I'd like to do is introduce Valerie Knoll from FCA. She would like to speak about exactly what is going to be happening at this new facility in Sterling Enterprise Park, and after that, I'll be available for questions.
I believe I'm supposed to, I was told to wipe this down. I was told to wipe this down. Hey, well, good evening, Mayor Taylor and city council. It's a pleasure to be here. It's great to see you in person from a distance, but in person, and it's also wonderful to be in your new community center. This is my first time in the building, and it's absolutely gorgeous, and I can't wait to get back here when it's up in use and full of people, and I'm hopeful we can get to that point sooner rather than later. But again, thank you for considering this item on the agenda tonight, and I have a short presentation I wanted to take you through just to explain to you a little bit more about the building and its use. So let me grab the clicker here. Okay, so again, this is for the Sterling Heights Assembly Plant, which I will refer to as Shap throughout the presentation. It's for the Sterling Heights Assembly Plant Metering and Sequencing Logistics Facility, which, as Mr. Bonner explained, is in the Sterling Enterprise Park. Okay, so first, just a little background on what is metering and sequencing logistics facility. So basically, it consists of metering and sequencing. So bulk parts metering is a process where parts are shipped from the supplier in large quantities, and then they are repackaged into smaller quantities at the facility, and then they are delivered to the plant or to Shap just in time or as needed. And then sequence part delivery, or SPD, is a process where the parts are delivered to the assembly plant in the exact order that they are needed as the vehicles are built. And so I've listed some examples here of sequence parts, dashboard wiring harnesses, rear driveshaft, rear carpet, side stops, ram box, steering wheel, stabilizer bar, chassis, wiring, shocks, and so forth. And the advantage of having a metering and sequencing logistics facility is that these parts are scanned each step of the process, so the movement then is tracked to ensure that the parts are delivered in the correct sequence and at the correct time to the assembly So why is this facility needed? So as you know, Shap produces the Ram 1500 truck, and the 2021 model year for the Ram truck programs has new trim options. These are additional trim options that are being added, and it increases the parts by the hundreds and also the complexity within the assembly plant. And currently, we do have a metering and sequencing logistics facility. It's in Mount Clemens, and that supplies the existing business at Shap right now, and that will still exist. This is a new facility, so this is a new facility to handle the additional trim options that are going to be part of the 21 model year for the Ram truck. And the reason we do not want to use the, we cannot use the Mount Clemens Sequencing Center is that simply we do not have enough space there for it, since these are all new A metering and sequencing logistics facility will help us control inventory better, which thus then reduces waste, maximizes floor space, and it makes the process more efficient. That's the handling and vehicle assembly process, it makes it more efficient. And I explained some of this in the last slide, exactly what a metering and sequencing facility is, but this pertains specifically to the new facility. And so we have metered parts which will be received at the facility from FCA suppliers, and then those metered parts are scanned, stored, repackaged, and then they will be delivered to Shap as needed. Then we will also have the sequin parts. Sequence parts are also, they are scanned, stored, and picked, and by picked, we mean selected, based on the broadcast schedule, that's the build schedule that we receive, they'll receive from Shap. And those parts then are either sequenced with other parts, or they can be sequenced with other parts to form a new part, a new assembly, which then has a new part number, or they can be sequenced with other parts to make a kit, and then those kits are also assembled as a package. And so following one of these steps, then they are delivered to the plant just in time as, as needed. So now I want to talk to you about the delivery flow, because I mentioned about our suppliers delivering parts, and then they'll be metered and sequenced and delivered back to Shap. So we will have approximately 40 deliveries per day from suppliers to this new metering and sequencing logistics facility, and then we will have approximately nine inbound and outbound, so round trips from the metering, per hour, from the metering facility to Shap. And on the map, you can see in the yellow is the new metering facility, it's kind of a square box up there, and then just to the south of that, all of the white buildings, that would be Shap, so just south of 17, between 16 and 17. So in the green, we have the outbound from the metering center. So the trucks will leave, they will turn left onto 17 Mile, down to Van Dyke, they'll take Van Dyke down to 16, turn right on 16, and then turn into the south entrance at Shap to deliver the parts. Then when the trucks return, the trucks again will leave at that south entrance and exit of Shap, and then they will turn right onto 16 Mile and take that to Mound, and then go north on Mound to 17 to return to the new metering center. As Mr. Bonner mentioned, this is a $14.6 million investment. There will be anywhere from 150 to 175 new supplier jobs. There will be three crews to be aligned with the three crews that we have working at Shap, 210,000 square feet, and I have a floor plan here. You can see the layout there on the, close to the road, that would be the west side of the building. That is where you have 127 parking places for employees. And to the north and south of the building, you can see there's 20 doors on the north and 20 doors on the south, for a total of 40 docks. And then the white space surrounding the building on all three sides would be the 183 trailer parking stalls for those delivery trucks that are coming and going. And the project timing, I have a photo here, this is the, this would be the west view of the building with the landscaping and the employee parking lot, and the building is essentially complete. There are some modifications that are still being discussed, such as some additional pedestrian doors and an access road in the rear, but for the most part, it's essentially complete. They're working on installing the racking right now, or assembling the racking. It's not actually installed yet, but they're working on assembling it within the building. And I'm trying to flip to the next slide. It's not letting me.
Try that, try that bell.
Are you able to control the presentation for me? Because at this point, it's not moving.
Trying to get you there.
Can you get back to that thing and just say no? Always ask for those. You're never ready to do the restart, right? Just when we had figured out how to get the Zoom meetings running smoothly, here we are, back in person. Technical difficulties, so bear with us. Thank you.
Okay, great. Next slide, yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Knoll.
Thank you. So I've included some photos here of the building, and again, in the top left, that would be the west side of the building. You can see the sidewalk and the crosswalk, that would be the employee parking. You can, just below that, again, is another view of that, just closer to the building with the landscaping. The photo to the right, the bottom right, that would be the north end of the building. You can see just the beginning of the docks there, and...
Okay.
I've got more photos. I can try again. And that is, that's the last one. I'm going to ask you to advance. And this is, again, you can see the docks at the bottom right, and then I have two interior photos here, as I mentioned, they're just starting to put together the racking within the building. And so that basically sums up kind of an overview of why we need the building. This is good news. It's creating new jobs here in Sterling Heights. Again, these are all new jobs. This is an additional trim levels, which means more choice for consumers out there, but it does increase the complexity of the vehicle, and so we do need a new building in order to handle that. We looked at a variety of other options out there, as I mentioned... As I mentioned, our current metering facility, which we do plan on keeping, is in Mount Clemens. But we did choose to be in Sterling Heights. This is a wonderful community, and it's a great place to do business. And we're happy, very happy to be here, as well as our over 10,000 employees, approximately 10,000 employees that we have at the CHAP facility and the Sterling Heights stamping plant. And so again, if you have any questions, I don't know if you want to do them now or if what the process is, just let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Knoll. What we'll do is, I'm going to open up the public hearing and let any members of the public who want to weigh in have a chance to participate. And then after the council makes a motion and we're deliberating, we may have questions and call you back up, so don't go too far away.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you very much for that presentation. Mr. Bonner, anything else? Okay, then at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolve to adopt the resolution approving the application by FCA US LLC for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate at 39600 Mitchell Drive for a period of 10 years in accordance with the guidelines established by city council. And the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized to sign, as applicable, all documents required in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion, Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Just a couple of comments. Wow, it's a very impressive facility. And you're bringing, you know, 150 to 175 more jobs to the, to the city, investing $14.5 million more into our city. And we couldn't be happier to have FCA as a corporate neighbor in our community. You have helped out our community immensely. And I welcome your improvements and your investments and wish you well. And that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Counsel?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Well, first of all, it was a great presentation, even though it had a little couple blurps in it. So I was grateful that we were able to see everything that's being done. But I don't care if you call yourselves Chrysler, Daimler, Chrysler, Cerberus, FCA. Whenever you come here, we know that you have the best intentions for our community and for your company as well. My husband worked for Chrysler for 35 years at, in Auburn, well, first in Highland Park and Auburn Hills. So all of these transitions and what, what has become of auto manufacturing and how it's done now as compared to years ago, and having something like this where it's the turnaround in order to get what you need when you need it. It's, to me, it's amazing. It's, it's a great investment in our community. And I'm certainly glad that you're still with us. We fought for CHAP to stay open, and certainly it has produced dividends for all of us. And I'm grateful. So I think, like Mrs. Schmidt said, that you are a great business partner in our city, and we certainly appreciate you being here. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Counsel, anyone else on this item? If not, briefly, I'll just say that I am definitely in support of this. And Valerie, I want to thank you for your presentation, apologize for the technical glitches. But I think we got the gist of it and saw. We're happy to see the pictures and get a better understanding of what the facility does. This high-tech manufacturing is really something. If you've been inside of the CHAP plant, it's, it's amazing. The sea of robots, but also, you know, thousands and thousands of workers coming together to produce, in my opinion, the best, absolute best vehicle out on the road. I have a Ram 1500 myself built right here in Sterling Heights, and I can tell you, it's a phenomenal vehicle. I'm curious about the new trim levels, but I really do like my 2019 Ram 1500, and I'm, I'm not giving it up anytime soon. But, you know, it's really an amazing thing to have a product like that. You know, you see, I see other Rams on the road. And I know, I speak from my experience, and I think the council would agree, it's really proud, we're really proud to see such a phenomenal product built right here in the city of Sterling Heights. So this, this facility is going to help to hopefully keep, keep the Ram 1500 in business for a very, very long time. And if you're out in the market for a truck, don't go with an F-150, and don't go with a Silverado or GMC or any of those other. Certainly don't go with a foreign truck. The Ram 1500 is the way to go, built in Sterling Heights. And I'm incredibly proud to support it. Anything else you want to add, Ms. Knoll?
I want to thank you for your support. As I mentioned, we're very happy to call Sterling Heights our home. I wanted to add, you may remember, over a year ago, we announced that we were going to be investing $4.5 billion within southeast Michigan. And that's separate than what I spoke about tonight. That's a completely separate investment, and that's within southeast Michigan. So in Detroit and Warren, and Sterling Heights is receiving a portion of that, too. 169 million is being invested into the Sterling stamping plant with 80 new jobs. So I didn't mention that as part of the presentation earlier, because that's a separate investment. But I just wanted to, to let you know that Sterling Heights definitely received a piece of that as well. This is a great place to do business. And we hope to be here for many more years and sell lots of trucks.
Well, we hope to have you, and I can tell you, I'm not just saying it. It is a phenomenal vehicle, and it's very, very well done. And I'm excited to see the new, the new models as well. I also want to thank you for FCA's donation of thousands of face masks to our fire department during the pandemic. And the PPE and, and that went a long way and was very helpful to keep our first responders safe. So I want to thank you for that. And with that, counsel, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. Knoll, good luck. And we appreciate it. And I appreciate the ability to call for a roll call, or not have to call for a roll call vote. How about that, Ms. Riska? Getting off easy tonight. Next item on our agenda is another public hearing. And this is a public hearing to consider the application by Olympia Construction Incorporated for a residential planned unit development on approximately 3.5 acres situated on the east side of Maple Lane, north of 14 Mile Road, P-P-U-D 20-0002. We have a presentation from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kachubski. As you noted, Mayor, before you, tonight is the second public hearing for this proposed planned unit development. The first one was conducted at the planning commission at their last meet, I'm sorry, at their previous meeting. And it was recommended for approval at that meeting to the city council. You are the final determining body for this particular development of a planned unit development. So let's kind of talk about the overview of the application itself, and then we'll get into the specifics. The request is, for this PUD, it would include a total of two duplexes, so a total of four residential units within those duplexes, and then four single-family residential site condominium sites, do placed on the overall parcel itself. The address is 34470 Maple Lane Drive. The current zoning is R-60, which is our one-family residential district, albeit our, our most dense one-family residential district. The duplexes themselves would be accessed via a single drive to Maple Lane directly, and the other, and would be similar to Heatherwood condominiums directly to the north. The single-family homes, which are to the east side of the development, would be accessed through an extension of Linda Lane that will eventually connect the development to the south, to the currently being developed Maplewood, Maple Lane condominiums to the north. The applicant is also proposing an extensive tree preservation area, which you'll see in the site plan in just one moment, which will actually be the rear portions of units five and six. But those will have a tree preservation easement placed over those lots. So those regulated trees would not be able to be removed unless they become somehow an endangerment to the property or adjacent properties. The price point, as described by the applicant at the planning commission, and you can verify these tonight if you, if you felt so necessary, would generally be about $285,000 to $325,000 for the duplexes, and approximately $375,000 to $425,000 for the single-family residences. You can see the zoning map here that shows the overall layout. Joad Point directly to the south, the Maple Lane site condominiums to be developed to the north. Heatherwood condominiums also to the north immediately against Maple Lane Road itself. The master plan does call for this area to be a planned residential area itself, which does suggest a mixture of housing types and a mixture of housing densities. So the planned unit development does fit quite nicely into this overall master planned area, which is carried over from mainly the west side of Maple Lane for the golf course development. But the master plan does carry that same designation onto the east side of Maple Lane Road itself. Generally speaking, this is the development style, the development layout. Duplexes, again, to the front, matching the duplexes directly to the north and further to the west across Maple Lane, and then single-family development to the east or the top portion of this particular photo, which would be similar, obviously, to the residential development that surrounds it to the northeast, east, and south. The site plan here, this is the site plan and landscape plan. The two duplexes are those to the far right, or far left-hand side of the screen, excuse me. Again, there's a total of four units in there. Those units would be about 1,200 square feet apiece. And you can see that there's an access directly onto Maple Lane, landscaping in front of the, the common drive. If you, if you know the, the area of Heatherwood condominiums directly to the north, this would basically mimic that, that same setup. Access drive across the front of the units, then individual driveways, and then the units themselves. Landscaping to the south to screen the duplexes, even though these units will be less intensive than the development to the south, because these units will be single, or single-story type units, or story and a half. The units to the south are generally two-story units. And then there will also be landscaping between the proposed duplexes and the proposed single-family homes internal to the development. You can see that just to the right, or just to the right-hand side of the duplexes themselves. The Linda Lane extension provides access to those four single-family residences to be constructed. And then finally, moving all the way to the right, that green box or that lime-colored box that kind of surrounds the overall wooded area. That area would meet the tree preservation requirements and actually exceed the city's current tree preservation requirements. And they're also proposing additional tree plantings around that area as well as throughout the development, as you can see by the landscaping be provided. We did take this development one step further, and they do have individual landscape plans proposed for both the duplexes as well as the conceptual for single-family residences. So these would be the model landscape plans for each one of those types of units. This is in addition to the overall landscape plan on the previous slide. And then these give you a flavor of what the units would look like. So this would be the duplex units, again, the front facade, again, approximately 1,200 square feet. One-story, generally one-story units, two-bedroom, two-bathroom. There's an 80-square-foot patio attached to the back, basically brick construction itself. Moving on to the single-family residences, these would be custom-built homes, but this basically provides the model types in terms of what the applicant is proposing for these units. Approximately 1,900 square feet for this particular model. Generally, a ranch story and a half, if you want to call it that. Three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, two-car garage, again, proposed brick veneer. This model gets a little larger, varies the, the building material slightly. We're up to 2,600 square feet essentially there. Four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, three-car garage, brick, stone, and some siding veneer on, on this particular unit itself. The applicant has requested essentially a 10% flexibility in total square footage for units. I think that's well within reason. Again, these will be somewhat custom-built homes as the, as the lots are sold. And again, we're looking at four total units for the overall development. So in terms of the PUD analysis, based on a simple calculation in our R-60 standards, the development could yield a much higher number, up to 16 homes. Albeit, based on this particular lot configuration or this particular overall parcel configuration, that density wouldn't necessarily be likely. The yield plan is probably a little bit more indicative to what could go there in terms of six units. So I think the eight units that are being proposed are well within the rights and inability for the PUD to be approved in this location. The development does meet the intent of the master plan. I talked about that earlier, and the fact that the master plan does suggest that this area be a mixed-use, a mixed-use in terms of residential use, mixed-density kind of development. It's generally consistent with the surrounding land use patterns. Again, directly to the north is duplexes, they're simply in line with that. And then single-family, obviously, to the north, or northeast, if you will, to the east and then to the south. The applicant has worked with the Office of Planning in terms of providing the landscape plan that they, that was shown earlier, in terms of the overall landscaping, as well as those individual residential unit landscaping plans. So that way, we don't get into a situation, especially for those single-family units, where people buy the unit and don't necessarily want to put in their own landscape, which does occur within the city. But in this particular instance, they'd be required to put in at least a minimum amount of landscape. And then the residences are consistent in terms of their overall style and character and development pattern with the surrounding area. To accomplish this, the development is asking for several variances, which, again, the Office of Planning doesn't necessarily have an objection with, since they're all basically internal to the development itself. There's a setback variation being requested between the two duplexes being proposed within here. Typically, we'd require 20 feet. The applicant is proposing a 15-foot variant, or 15-foot setback between those, so a slight variation there. And then at the multiple-family homes, the duplexes would technically, in a normal situation, require a 100-foot lot to place each duplex on. They're requesting 80 feet. And then the width-to-depth ratio is also being requested to be varied for lots five and six. Those are those two lots that have the tree preservation easement on them. They did that in lieu of, we went through this discussion with the applicant during the preliminary stages. It was to whether that back area would remain open space or if it'd be better served to actually have that as private ownership. Since there's really no means to access that far eastern portion part of the property, we felt it was probably better to actually keep them in actual ownership and then put a preservation easement over that. The applicant agreed, and then that has been now part of the agreement. So I want to stress that in terms of the tree preservation area, because I think that's a really important aspect. As single-family homes, our ordinance would eventually allow those homes to remove those trees if those residents in sometime in the future wanted to do that. Again, with the provisions put into the PUD agreement and that if this was ultimately approved, that would then be carried into the master deed for this development, those trees, again, that are regulated trees within the development, will be forever preserved. Again, unless there's an endangerment issue or something of that. But, but it's, it's an idea that we came up with to help preserve the tree canopy long term. So I think, again, I think that's an overall win for the city, where normally, if this was developed conventionally, those homes could ultimately take those home, those trees down. And again, they'll provide for long-term preservation. So with that, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. McLeod, is the applicant here, would like to speak?
Evening, I'd like to introduce myself, Giovanni Aluia with Olympia Construction.
Just ask you, if you could, to speak, try to get close to that microphone, if you could, so we can hear you.
My name is Giovanni Aluia with Olympia Construction. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, what we'll do is, we'll open the public hearing and hear from the audience if anybody has any questions. And then when the city council is deliberating, we'll call you back up if we have any, okay? All right, thank you very much, sir. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarowski.
Resolve to approve the application by Olympia Construction Incorporated for a planned unit development on approximately 3.5 acres situated on the east side of Maple Lane, north of 14 Mile Road, P-P-U-D 20-0002, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the planned unit development agreement and authorized by the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any discussion?
Just a couple of comments, Mayor Taylor, if I may. So, Mr. Aluia, thank you. This is a beautiful, looking like a very beautiful development, so we're very happy. I, I do think that this is going to help that area. Just on a little side note, it's a, it's a little high price for that general area, but we're hoping that there will be enough interest and need for that. You may want to consider the economic status as it is right now, might be a little flexible on that. But other than that, it looks beautiful. And we do love to have beautiful things in our city. We want to make sure that we preserve that tree canopy, so I appreciate that concession with part of our, or the agreement that we've made, so I thank you for that. And I really just want to make sure that we continue to maintain our city as well as we can. And that is one, one good way to do it, is with beautiful properties that people will maintain on their own. So I have no other further comments, thank you.
Counsel? Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo Mayor Protem Zarowski's comments. I think it looks like a beautiful development. And I really want to thank you for the innovative structure of this tree preservation ordinance. One thing we've really been focused on here in Sterling Heights is preserving and even building upon our tree canopy. building upon our tree canopy, and I think that this is going to be a wonderful development. With that, I have a few questions, though, to Mr. McLeod through the chair. The stub street of Linda Lane that eventually will connect with the development that's going on to the north, I forget what it's called, but next to the school?
Mr. McLeod.
That is correct, yes. It'll eventually connect to that. That's phase two of the development that's currently being constructed.
Okay, and our fire department, until that's constructed, have no problem with the street being the length that it is or anything like that?
I think realistically, they'll probably sync up at the rate that they're building homes to the north, and by the time this hits construction. But yeah, in terms of when this hits, site plan review, fire department will review it. If they want a temporary turn, by all means, they can request that, but realistically, at a basically a three-lot depth, they should be fine.
No problem. Then I have a few questions about the tree preservation ordinance. So from my understanding, what you'd explained, the property owners own the the land and the trees, but they are going to preserve it in perpetuity for tree preservation, essentially?
That's correct. So lots five and six, as you can show, see on the site plan here, do extend all the way to the far right-hand side of the screen, so they're excessively deep lots. But the tree preservation easement that will go across there will basically preserve all regulated trees, I want to stress that, so there may be some selective tree removal in there for trees that aren't regulated, that's basically trees less than six inches. But with that being said, those trees that are over six inches that are basically shown on this plan will be preserved in addition to the ones, obviously, being planted as part of this.
But it'll be private use, so just be for those two lots that they own it. No one will have public access like they do to our our current conservation zone that we have in the northern part of the city?
That is correct. As being private property, they would be the sole ownership of unit five or unit six, depending on where you're at on the property. But again, when we looked at this, there was really no good way to obtain public access or at least development access to the rear portion of those properties, so we felt that this was realistically the best option to to take.
And the homeowners then would have to maintain the the tree area, essentially, and if, will we have a check on them to make sure that they're doing what we what we are agreed to?
Yep, so that actually came up as part of the planning commission discussion in subsequent conversations with one of the abutting landowners. Yes, they would be subject to the same requirements, just like any other lot owner. Obviously, being a wooded area, there's not necessarily the mowing requirements and things, but it's not going to be necessarily a place to store things, so to speak, or whatever the case is. So I mean, if a neighbor does call and say, hey, there's something going on in the back of the yard here that, you know, shouldn't be stored there, or whatever the case is, by all means, code enforcement can go out there and take care of the issue.
That pretty much answers all my questions. I'm strongly in favor of this. I think it matches up with the condominiums to the north of it. I think it matches with the both developments, south and north. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition, and I bet you're going to get the price you're looking for because that seems to be the market here in Sterling Heights. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
Through the chair to Mr. McLeod to continue on that conversation. I'm assuming then that that property that will go to, what is it, lots five and six?
Yes, in terms of lots five and six, do extend all the way to the rear, so that would be in their private ownership, albeit somewhat deep restricted.
If they choose to let it go natural, they could. If they choose to mow it, they could. They would just use it like a backyard in a residential neighborhood, correct?
That's absolutely correct. If they wanted to mow that entire area, albeit leaving the trees, by all means, they could manicure that area to whatever degree the grass would grow under the canopy, yep.
Will the trees be marked in any way that must be preserved? Will they be tagged?
So all the regulated trees that are on-site now are tagged with a metal tag, so they are noted. That's how this plan has ultimately developed, that you can see the the trees shown on here. So each one of those has a corresponding number, so those trees are marked as being a regulated tree and therefore would need to be maintained.
Will there be a document recorded preserving those trees that will run with the land?
Yes, actually, probably twofold. The PUD agreement itself indicates that that area has to be preserved, and then once the development goes into the actual site planning process, if approved here tonight, then the master deed, which would overall control this development, would also contain similar language that that area would have to be preserved.
So any future homeowners will also know that they must preserve those particular trees?
That's correct. Anyone who purchases a property in here would be subject to and receive a copy of the master deed, and hopefully, through their title search, the copy of the PUD agreement, so they should be well aware, as long as they're reading their documentation, what the requirements of that area are.
Thank you. That's all.
Counsel, anyone else? Mr. McLeod, what is the what is the penalty if the trees are removed? What would, what is the city's recourse?
Typical recourse for our tree preservation requirement is if a tree is removed, it has to be replaced in kind, so, or in like. Obviously, if it's a, let's say, a 24-inch tree, they're not going to plant a 24-inch tree, we would simply say that it'd be eight three-inch caliber trees.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Thank you, counsel. With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Good luck, congratulations. Next item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance introduction, and this is to consider introduction of an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 278 to add Article 14B, creating a traditional mixed-use development node overlay district. Presentation again from our city planner, Chris McLeod. Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, Mr. Vanderpoel, Ms. Koshupski again. As you indicated, Mayor, this is a potential ordinance introduction for a continuation of implementation of the city's master plan that was originally adopted in 2017. This is for our traditional mixed-use development nodes. There's a lot of text here, so I'm not going to highlight it or summarize it, but basically, the intent of this district is to provide a mixture of of land uses and an intensification of density at 11 different areas throughout the city. One of the things that the city has been very proactive in in the last five or so years as the master plan was developed and as different zoning ordinance amendments has come forward to you over that same timeframe, is providing flexibility for development. Gone are the days of of more rigid standards to say, you know, single-family lots are X-size versus Y-depth, and and commercial development can only occur in certain areas in separation of uses. While lots of areas of the city are going to maintain that same premise, the city has been on its main corridors and now with potentially these 11 districts, providing a lot of different flexibility options for developers and landowners to utilize or better utilize their property in an ever-evolving economy. So again, the intent is just that, that a flexibility for those existing properties within those 11 areas. The process, when you're in one of these areas, if you want to modify your property, and again, I want to highlight that, so existing properties would remain as-is, you're probably recognizing some of this this conversation because we've used the same principle for Bound Road and for Van Dyke and for Lakeside, but for these areas, the underlying zoning district would be maintained until such point where you trigger it by development. So if you do physical alteration to your property, adding on, rebuilding, whatever the case may be, then you can trip into the traditional mixed-use node district. We utilize the same site plan, special approval land uses and so forth as defined within the district. The additional uses, you know, one of the main things we're allowing, and since most of these nodes are basically non-residential nodes, we're obviously including residential uses, but we're also opening up the variety or the scheme of those non-residential uses. For instance, if it is a C1 intersection in the underlying zoning scheme, if the conditions are right and the development is right, a C3-type use could be allowed within there, albeit via special land use and residential development in combination with that. Building intensity, as I discussed, would be, we would allow for taller, more densely-developed buildings. Screening would still be in place for those outside of the district, so to speak, so as you hit the outskirts of the development node, which is generally about a quarter-mile from the intersection point, generally speaking, those residents that aren't inside the node would still be afforded protections from the more intensely-developed node area. And then parking, as parking continues to fluctuate in terms of its need, we develop our ordinances so that way they can be, they can flex with the market demand, and as autonomous vehicles come onboard and so forth, and Ubers and Lifts and all sorts of things, our parking can also be flexible to adjust with that. So the dark purple areas shown on the overall, this is our overall master land use plan, so those dark purple areas are the development nodes. As you can see on the left-hand side of the screen, Shaner 19, Ryan and 18, Dequinder and 17, Ryan and 17, Ryan and 15, Van Dyke and 17, Shaner and 17, Dequinder and 15, Dodge Park and 15, Shaner and 15, and Utica and Van Dyke. So those are the development nodes. Again, basically speaking, with obviously some variation, but depending on, you know, parcel configuration and existing development patterns, about a quarter-mile in each direction from that intersection. So these, I'm going to roll through these kind of quick. These are just the blowups of each one of those intersections. But for instance, the master plan does provide some specifics. Again, this isn't necessarily a dictation in terms of what goes in that area, but shows how this area could potentially develop. This is 18 and Ryan. So you see buildings pushed closer to the roadways. You see, again, the intensification of buildings, you see the reduction of parking. We're basically taking our more traditional development pattern as a as a more suburban community, flipping that and putting the building closer to the road, de-emphasizing parking and creating a much more pedestrian environment. So again, Ryan and 18, Dequinder and 17, Dequinder and 15. Again, these are just the highlights of of these particular areas. Again, here is Dequinder and 15 showing a little bit more detail. Again, these are models, these are not necessarily, you know, dictating what a site plan would ultimately look like, but how it could be developed under this particular development Again, Ryan and 15, one of our major intersections, Dodge Park and 15, basically to the north and to the west and northeast of of the intersection itself, does take into account some area south of of the intersection. This particular concept, again, showing buildings pushed to the roadway, counting for some of the existing buildings, but also anticipating redevelopment of some of those buildings. As as you're well aware, some of the buildings within the city are kind of reaching their their lifespan, so to speak, and developers and property owners are always looking at the potential of of redeveloping their property. So again, this is an opportunity for them to greatly utilize or vastly utilize their property in a better, a better and more efficient way. This is a further intensification of what could happen at 15 and Dodge Park. Again, Shaner and 15, Shaner and Utica Road, Van Dyke and Utica. This again kind of shows a concept of what could be ultimately developed at Utica and Van Dyke, utilizing the principles contained within the ordinance. Shaner and 19, Van Dyke and 17. And again, a concept of what could be developed, some of the building orientation, some of the building designs and concepts that would be envisioned there. So again, the idea is that this is going to be phasing, this isn't going to happen overnight, so as we go through each individual plan, as they come in, as each property redevelops, we have to take it in context of where it sits within the overall relationship to the intersection as well as the surrounding properties. So this will be a transition over time. It's not going to occur instantaneously, but we need to make sure that the relationship between buildings as they begin to redevelop are cognizant not only of the existing businesses that are there, we don't want to obviously hinder or impair them, but also making sure that we're moving closer to our ultimate goal of a more intense and and more pedestrian-friendly, auto-deoriented type of of development. So some of the, some of the highlights, again, planning commission did recommend this unanimously at our June 2020 meeting. Does reduce the potential need for variances. That's one thing that we we always strive for is reducing the number of variances, reducing the necessity to go to multiple boards by building in a lot of flexibility, reduces the need for additional meetings. If you go through this and some of the items are already set up, you don't necessarily have to go through a rezoning or a PUD process, our idea. Not that applicants don't like to come see you or the planning commission, but if we can do things administratively, it's just quicker. And in this day and age, developments try to move, obviously, move as quickly as possible. More efficient use of land. Again, this furthers the adoption of the master land use plan, which was originally adopted in 2017, further implements the 2030 visioning plan, which is our guiding principle for everything that we do, right? And will encourage reinvestment. So I, again, freeing up, and too many times, people see zoning regulations as as impediments. This is designed to be a conduit for the ability to develop throughout the city, and then obviously allowing for innovative development. Again, we don't want to be the zoning ordinance that says, you can't, you can't, you can't. We want to be the zoning ordinance that says, we can, we can review that, we can look at it, we can approve that. I mean, so, but again, you know, these are 11 different areas as as we highlighted. So with that, I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Not, counsel, we need a motion. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Radke.
Resolved to introduce the ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 278 to add Article 14B, creating a traditional mixed-use development node overlay district.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
Sure. I think that this project is is just what the city needs. We've talked about intensification and allowing more pedestrian-friendly uses, and this is the the next step in that process. And one of the key things is, the the master plan already allows for it. This is just implementation of the master plan that was adopted in 2017. We're not changing anything with our master plan, we're just giving developers the system they need to develop along with our master plan. Then I guess I have a couple of questions. Through the chair to Mr. McLeod, there were a couple of intersections I thought should be part of this plan that weren't. One was 16 Mile and Shaner, or Metro Parkway and Shaner, which right now is kind of several vacant buildings, and I believe a Dollar General's going in or Dollar Tree is going in. And also Plum Brook and Dodge Park has a commercial plaza on the west side of the street, and I was wondering why those weren't included in this ordinance?
Mr. McLeod.
Well, the the initial answer is that the the zoning ordinance follows what the master plan recommendation is. So even though we we say it's recently adopted master plan, it's almost time for us to start re-reviewing the master plan. So I mean, we could always look at additional intersections as we move forward and then amend the ordinance accordingly, or if it requires a different, you know, amendment, but but the simple answer is, is that whenever you you are implementing zoning ordinance provisions, you want to make sure that, you know, your basis, your foundation, which is your master plan, that you're synced up. So I wouldn't want to step necessarily outside the bounds of the master plan at this particular time, but obviously, those are two intersections, and there's probably several others throughout the city that, you know, once this gets rolling, I think that there are probably other property owners saying, why not, why not us? So there's probably other intersections that we could ultimately look at. But that's the short answer, is that we just wanted to sync with the master plan.
Okay. I I think this makes land more valuable because it allows more intensity, and it's nothing that other cities aren't doing. We're just going to implement it here, especially on well-used corners. I mean, I I live right by 15 Mile and Dodge Park, and I guess the future I see there is buildings on the street and maybe a pedestrian plaza inside of the northeast corner of 15 Mile and Dodge Park for people to walk, and I think that's the future. People living in buildings, coming downstairs, maybe going to the Dodge Park Coney Island for lunch and getting a coffee at another business nearby, and basically living their life at 15 Mile and Dodge Park. And I think that if we do this, a lot of other great things will happen. It goes along with our trails plan, it goes along with our non-pedestrian uses that we've been so focused on, and it'll just be one more reason for families to move to Sterling Heights, not just families, but young professionals who want the nature and the things that we have here, especially our park system, and maybe don't want to have to use their car every single day. So I am strongly in favor of this, and I think it's a wonderful project. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koski.
Through the chair to Mr. McLeod. On here you have the Shaner and 17 Road intersection. Is that the area where it is all wooded? It would be south of the wetland preserved. What would be the plans there?
Realistically, that property is challenged, we'll maybe just say that. And so realistically, it would need the ability to have flexibility and the potential for additional density to make that property ultimately work. Obviously, this does not erase any issues in terms of any underlying environmental issues or any wetlands or floodplains or anything of that nature. By all means, those rules all still apply, and and obviously, you would still be required to meet the tree preservation requirements of the city as well. So roll all those things together. We're still going to make sure that we're preserving the environment, preserving tree canopy, preserving the the tree areas, but also allowing flexibility and potential density increases to allow for redevelopment to occur. Because again, as as currently zoned, as currently, I'll leave it as currently zoned, you know, that property is is going to be challenged to ever be developed, and, you know, this at least gives it an option for a development. And, you know, this at least gives it an option for a developer to take a look at it and say that they can make something work in a unique fashion. And that's, that's exactly, you know, what this ordinance would trip at that point.
Has that property ever been considered as being additional wetlands? Because when Shaner Road was put through, the idea was to create, to replace wetlands to mitigate the wetlands there. And if I remember correctly, the northern portion is already designated wetlands. The portion directly south of the 17 Mile intersection to the west side of Shaner, that area to me appears to also be wetlands. Is there any possibility that that still is considered wetlands that would be preserved and then development would take place south of that?
Yeah, so I think as, as you can see on the screen, even, you know, our master plan mapping even suggests that some of that might be the case. Again, as with any development within the city, you know, if there's suspected wetlands on a property, we send them to the state to get the state verification. The state, absent us having a wetland ordinance of our own, the state is the determinant of whether something's a wetland or not. So they would have to prove to us whether or not that is a wetland, a regulated wetland. If it's a non-regulated wetland, then in theory, they could remove the wetland. But I think this ordinance would allow for the opportunity to say it could be an enhancement for the overall development. And this would allow the flexibility to say, "Okay, that's a wooded area, that's a wetland area, that's a natural area that could ultimately be a natural area for a residential development or a mixed-use development that can actually increase property values." So normal zoning in this situation may ultimately dictate that a non-regulated wetland be removed because they need to utilize every single portion of the property. A flexible ordinance like this may allow them to maneuver around that and actually save costs and actually increase profitability from the standpoint that they could actually use that as enhancement, so.
Well, that's what I was wondering, whether you're recommending that as an example, what you just said, if a proposed developer were to say, "The northern portion of that section I will preserve as wetlands," give me the opportunity to put what on the south part? Are you recommending residential? Are you recommending commercial? What are you recommending, if anything?
So I think the ordinance allows for basically and encourages a mixture of uses. And what that mixture may ultimately be may be somewhat dictated by, by the market at that particular point. Do I see this as a huge, you know, commercial interchange? No. I mean, but would, you know, some small retail component, you know, be an asset to this area if it's developed as a, as a, you know, multiple-story building? I don't want to say that that's not a good, good idea right now. I mean, like I said, it's ultimately, as that proposal comes forward and kind of evolves, and again, depending on what comes out of, you know, the current situation we're in now with the economy, you know, this just allows the flexibility to be there. So.
So the bottom line is you look at anything?
Yeah. It opens the door to anything, and then ultimately has to follow, you know, the underlying zoning ordinance first and foremost, and then the PUD, or then, I'm sorry, then the overlay district comes into play if they want to mix the uses. And then we have, you know, certain abilities to either approve or deny that application depending on, on what they're proposing.
And you said that these would be phased in. So in other words, take any intersection, let's talk about 15 Mile and Ryan, closer to the street, multiple-story buildings. What if there was someone that had a parcel like two or three lots over from the middle of the intersection, and they wanted to put in a four-story apartment building?
So in terms of, yes, the developments, obviously these intersections are multiple properties. So obviously, different landowners have different timeframes, different ultimate goals, different ideas of what their property should do and what they want to do with it. So as development does occur, there will, I'm not going to lie, there probably will be some growing pains. There will be some times where developers or property owners may not be happy that a development they feel may be too close to the road or may block their view. And that's the, the one aspect of it is that that's somewhat of the reality of it. I mean, when you go from a major transition from setting buildings way back in a suburban setting to pushing or allowing buildings closer to the road, there's no way around it, and there has to be a starting point. And there's going to be times where people may not, you know, there's always, there's always a reason to, for someone to say, you know, "This shouldn't go there." But I think, you know, this allows the city to take that stuff forward, and I think, you know, we're, there's going to be times where we're going to have to stand strong and say, "This is ultimately the best option for all the property owners." And sooner or later, that property owner that may not like it initially will ultimately benefit from it. Number one, it'll drive up their potential property values in terms of if they wanted to sell, or it also obviously allow them a lot of flexibility ultimately to redevelop their property to gain additional money on the backend as well.
Well, that's my concern is that, as you say, one developer wants to put in a project closer to the road, the one next to them is set back 35 feet or what have you, and then the next one wants to come right up to the sidewalk area. You've got this one that's pushed way back. That's my concern with this. And I'm assuming that this is something that if implemented, we're going to look at very closely and try to prevent any conflicts?
That's obviously always our goal. I mean, you know, we always, you know, try to have developers or property owners who are developing, you know, talk to their neighbors in, for whatever instance it may be. In this instance, you know, we'll obviously encourage that as well, especially if there is a drastic difference between setbacks. But again, ultimately, there, as soon as anyone puts a building a foot or two in front of, you know, the person who may be objecting, you know, their building, there's going to be some, some pains there. So, you know, we'll do as much as we possibly can. Obviously, again, our goal is that we want every business and every building to be, you know, to be successful and every building to be occupied. So, you know, we don't want to do anything detrimental to that. But again, we still have to, you know, have the ability to try to move this forward at some point. And, you know, since this has been identified obviously as a major goal of the city in multitude of areas, and for this particular ordinance in these specific 11 areas, but yeah, there, I'm not going to lie, there, there's probably going to be some times where there's going to be some unhappy property owners. And like I said, we will work as well as we can through the planning department to try to ease those concerns and try to educate them about what this could ultimately do for their own properties. But yeah, and that's, that's what we can do.
Well, it just would make more sense to me if it were done, as an example, the north end of Van Dyke, the area that we need to redevelop rather than going back to existing intersections. So understand what you're doing, but be careful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kosky. Anyone else, council?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. McLeod. So I guess the intersection that sticks out in my mind that's not on the list is 15 and Van Dyke. And I'm wondering if that's because back in probably 2005, we rezoned that as a PUD already. So is that why this, I mean, why wasn't that considered? I know it was like 2005, 2006, and then the bottom fell out of the economy where MJR is, and, you know, that whole corner kind of fell apart. Now we have an empty Target there, and actually across the street, we have a hotel that's, is what it is, and, you know, so I'm wondering why that intersection wasn't on the list?
You'll notice that there's really only one Van Dyke, or one Van Dyke node, and that's up on the north end, up at Utica. But realistically, that's because we have the Van Dyke Mixed Use Corridor District, which was approved by City Council not too long ago. And it does allow for a vast amount of flexibility in terms of, in its own right, for properties that front on Van Dyke. And that's all the way up and down the corridor, basically from 14 to 15. So it wasn't necessarily a node, but we identified it as a corridor, and it has a lot of the same provisions. That does allow for flexibility, allows for more densely development. But again, since that is a four-mile corridor, rather than, you know, these specific more downtown-ish type areas, if you will, I don't want, I hate using that term, but pedestrian-friendly areas more so. But that's, that's the reason it was left off, is because there's another district already in place that covers it.
So is, is that property still zoned as a PUD? Do you know?
At 15 and Van Dyke, so once you have a PUD approved, I mean, technically it runs with the property. As it slowly evolves away from that, as redevelopment occurs, you know, then you're kind of working your way through it. But that Van Dyke Mixed Use District is an overlay that would go over top of that. So if they ever wanted to come back and say, "We want to do something different," at that point, we'd go back and see if there was any still applicability of that PUD agreement, but then we would try to overlay the Van Dyke Mixed Use Corridor on top of that to say, "This is where we're going, and this is the regulations that we want to utilize to get there in that particular instance."
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further, Mayor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just have one question. Is there any, through the chair to Mr. McLeod, is there any active interest in doing some of this now? I mean, is there a developer that has approached the city and said, "You know, if you happen to do this, we'd be interested in a particular intersection"?
I wouldn't say that it necessarily goes like that. I think any, you know, most property owners or anyone coming into the city to do development, it's not uncommon for us to hear, "Wow, you have really big green belt or really big setback requirements." And in every community, you always have issues of people saying, "Wow, that's a lot of parking." And so we hear comments like that all the time, and that's not uncommon, and that's why we've brought all the amendments forward that we have in the last, you know, four or five years, but to address a lot of those concerns and allow for the flexibility. So do we have developers that would utilize this? You know, there's no one necessarily standing in line at this particular moment, but I think as soon as, you know, developers and property owners, you know, get the idea that this is now in play, I think there's a lot of people that would start to utilize it. I mean, it opens up a lot of opportunities.
And I agree. I think that it's almost like a sustainable neighborhood when you think that you could probably live, work, and entertain yourself within walking distance. So, yeah, I think it's a good idea. It's good that we have it in place, but I'm anxious to see how many people are actually going to do it. Nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Anyone else? If not, I'll just be very brief. I think that this is a good innovative way to start developing the community in a way that we've been talking about for a number of years and gives some exciting possibilities. I agree that there'll be possibly growing pains, but I'm not concerned about that at all. I think that, you know, the way that cities and communities and neighborhoods, particularly neighborhoods, evolve over time, it just, when you, when you look at it as it's happening, it probably looks messy, and then 20, 30 years later, when you look back, that, it all seems to make sense. So I'm not afraid of that at all. I think this is a really great program to implement, and I'm excited to see how it takes shape. So with no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item on our agenda is an ordinance adoption, and this is to adopt the final amendment to the appropriations ordinance for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to adopt the final amendment to the appropriations ordinance for the 2019-20 fiscal year. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
I think this has been explained, and it's, it is what it is.
A great use of that phrase. Anyone else, council? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Mr. Jefferson? As we have public comment, I would just ask the courtesy of, if you do touch the podium or the microphone, could you please wipe it down? And if you, whether or not you touch the microphone, if you would wipe down the microphone after you're done speaking, we would appreciate it very much. Thank you. Mr. Jefferson.
How you doing, Mayor? Good. First of all, a lot of people knew I was injured. I'd like to thank those people for sending out those good wishes. I'd like to talk to the mayor and Mr. Vanderpool. I wish Mr. McLeod had stayed here for, from the last item, talking about D. What is the plan for getting these contracts and these bids out to minorities, women, and our gay, lesbian, and transsexual population? How, can you tell us that any of these contracts go out? Does this go out to any of those people? I kind of know the answer to this already, that you can't make people bid on any of these bids. But now that we've got in bed with two terrorist organizations, that being NAN and that being the Black Lives Movement, we have to make some kind of concessions to see how we're going to get these particular contracts to minority groups, women, the gays, lesbians, bisexual, transgender. We have a council person who already says that he ain't willing to deal with just white people anymore. So my question is, what's the plan for getting these to those groups at this present moment? So hopefully you can be truthful with us, Mayor, you too, Mr. Vanderpool, because like I said, those two terrorist groups, they might come and be peaceful at first. Then they'll send out the terrorist party, and it's burn, baby burn. So not a ball in your court. So can you tell us how many of these went out to those, those various groups? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a consideration item. This is to consider a request to transfer ownership of a 2019 Class C liquor license business with Sunday sales permit, PM, dance entertainment permit, and specific purpose permit, food, from EAA LLC to Gold Stars Corporation Incorporated. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Resolved that the request to transfer ownership of the 2019 Class C liquor license business with Sunday sales permit, PM, dance entertainment permit, and specific purpose permit for food from EAA LLC to Gold Stars Corporation Incorporated be considered for approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Sarowski?
No, Mayor Taylor. It does tell us who it's coming from and where it's going to and why, and I have eaten at alleys, so, or alleys, and I'm, I'm fully in agreement to this, so I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Counsel, any other discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Is the petitioner here?
Is the petitioner here?
That maybe he might want to say something?
Thank you, Ms. Kosky. Is the petitioner here in the audience? Do you have anything you want to say you're not required to?
This is your opportunity to make your pitch.
Um, is that all we have to say?
Okay. Mrs. Kosky, anything further?
No, I just wanted to give her the opportunity to do a little advertising.
Counsel, any further discussion on this item? With no further discussion, can we please have a roll call vote, Ms. Riska? please have a roll call vote, Ms. Riska?
Hopefully. Okay, here we are. Okay. Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis?
Mrs. Zarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Motion carries, 5-0, with Mr. Radke temporarily absent and Mr. Yanis absent from the meeting. Move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is to consider approval of a collective bargaining, bargaining agreement between the City of Sterling Heights and AFSME Local 1917 Representing Department of Public Works Supervisory Employees for the period of July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2021. We have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you very much, Mayor. This item pertains to the agreement you just mentioned. In anticipation of the expiration date, the city and representatives of the DPW Supervisory Bargaining Unit met to discuss options for a new CBA, or collective bargaining agreement. In light of the significant impact COVID-19 outbreak and the uncertainty over its long-term implications, the city and the DPW Supervisory Bargaining Unit agreed that it was in their mutual best interest to negotiate a new CBA with a much shorter term, with very limited amendments. The product of these negotiations is a proposed one-year agreement that would run through July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021. And it affords the DPW Supervisory members with a 2.5% wage increase, effective, however, January 1, 2021. For fiscal year 2021, this will be an effective wage increase of 1.25%, based on the fact that the wages will increase as of January 1, or six months into the fiscal year. It should be noted that the DPW Supervisory Group is the only bargaining unit that has an expiring CBA with its current three-year term. Every other bargaining unit has a CBA with a four-year term and a 2.5% wage increase in their fourth year or final year. All other contractual benefits remain status quo per the expiring CBA, including medical coverage for active members and any members retiring during the one-year term of the new CBA. Retirement benefits, which include fixed pension or defined benefit and defined contribution plans, also remain the same. I would like to thank DPW Supervisory Union leadership and Assistant City Manager Jeff Bahorski's spirit of collaboration that enabled the two parties to reach the tentative agreement being presented for approval this evening. And with the above in mind, I respectfully request the mayor and city council approve the collective bargaining agreement and the related memorandums of understanding before you this evening.
Thanks very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolved to approve the collective bargaining agreement and memorandums of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and AFSME Local 1917 DPW Supervisory Employees for the period of July 1, 2020, through July 30, 2021, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign all documents in conjunction with this approval.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Schmidt?
I do not. Thank you.
Counsel, any discussion on this item?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
It's always a good feeling to know that we can reach these agreements, and certainly our employees are very cognizant of what's going on in the world right now. So, I'm, I'm glad that we got an agreement, and I'm certainly glad that it's only for a year, so we can bring this back to the table next year as things start to change. So, I'm, that's what I'm really grateful for. Nothing further.
Counsel, any, Mr. Radke?
I just have a question to the chair and Mr. Kachubski. The suggested action on my packet says June 30, 2021. I believe Councilman Schmidt said July 30, 2021. Does that matter?
Mr. Kachubski, did you pick up on that?
It does matter, so we need a clarification that she meant June 30, 2021. I didn't hear that, so, I thought she did say June, but I may be wrong.
Ms. Schmidt, to the extent that you said June, just clarify, could you just clarify that the motion is through June 30, 2021?
Sure.
Just in case.
Sure. The collective bargaining agreement is through June 30, 2021.
Got it. Thank you. Ms. Schmidt, counsel, any further discussion? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider an appointment to the City of Sterling Heights Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item?
Mayor Taylor.
Yes. I'll take you, Ms. first, and then get you next, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you, Ma, Mayor Taylor. Thank you to the council. My name is Shania Merkowitz. I moved to Sterling Heights seven months ago. I work freelance, and I have aspirations to start a business here. As most people here, I celebrated our founding fathers' victory three days ago in their fight for no taxation without representation. Proper representation is a fundamental American ideal. According to the census, census.gov, in 2012, there were 11,007 businesses in Sterling Heights, and 3,864 of them, 35%, were owned by women. 51% of the population in Sterling Heights was female. So, on a leadership board of seven members, I would naturally expect around three members to be female. From the same census, 16% of residents were minorities. I would also expect that one of those members on a seven-person board would be of a minority community. I am concerned, because currently on the zoning board of appeals, the, there is not a voice for women and individuals of minority communities. The, the issue specifically for me is not with Mr. Heisenberg's ethnicity. The issue is of representation. There is already a very strong voice for white residents on that board, and there's a very strong voice for male residents on that board. In fact, there's six voices for them on that board. I understand that qualifications are important and definitely needs to be taken into account. However, I also feel it's quite embarrassing if we are not able to find a female or a minority individual in our city that has the proper qualifications to serve on the board. I am urging the council to please look through the other applications and consider a nominee who will give proper representation to the women and the minorities of this community. Because we, we know that, that the, the members that already make up the board will have a great voice for the male, white business owners and residents of this community. So, I'm just, I'm pleading with you to please, please, please appoint a female or minority or both to that role. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mr. Jefferson?
I'm gonna be the first to say, I missed the other place. I didn't have a long walk. I would like to know, because a young lady said, what are the qualifications for being on these board or commissions besides being a resident of Sterling Heights and voter, registered voter in Sterling Heights? For almost 50 years, that's all you needed to be on a board or commission, but it seems here lately that other things are starting to pop in, qualifications. Seems like for 50 years, we did pretty good just being, people who volunteered, came up to volunteer, and they got set off the boards and commissions. It wasn't never, it was just whoever volunteered. Maybe the young lady doesn't know the process. Maybe someone can explain the process to her, how the things got, how people got, how they get on boards and commissions. Now, Mayor Taylor, we have a problem here. I, I don't know how you're going to be able to solve this, because, as she said, now that we have to look at putting women up there, minorities up there, we got a council person saying that there's no longer interest in making all-white boards or commissions. I remember a few years ago, Mayor Taylor, you specifically asked for volunteers to join the boards or commissions. You didn't ask for sex, race, color, bisexuals, lesbians, transgender people. That's another group. How are we going to represent them? Mayor Taylor, I don't know how you're gonna go to the city clerk's office and if, say, we'll just use the board, the beautification committee. How are you gonna go to the city clerk's office and say, "Hey, we have openings in the beautification committee. Well, we have too many white people. Can you sort them out for colored people, women, gays, lesbians, bisexuals, transgender people?" Somebody has made a mess out of this thing. Like I said, it's not a qualification thing. The qualification was only to be a resident for one year and to be a registered voter. I've been on these committees, and I know for a fact that you didn't need any experience or anything, because you have a liaison there between the city and the board or commission that explains the process to people, I mean to the, to the committee. You have liaison to go between the people who are with the complaint or whatever it is. So, could you please explain the process that's going to be in place from here on out for these boards or commissions, since Mike Radke virtually stole it, and he, he didn't put the rest of you folks under the gun? You guys don't acquiesce to his, his demands. It's gonna be problems. It can only be problems. We'll talk about that next. But, thank you. Have a good day.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Jefferson. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? If not, close that portion. And counsel, we need, we have a nominee who has been nominated for appointment, Dennis Hansinger. Is there anyone who'd like to make the motion to appoint Mr. Hansinger?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to appoint Dennis Hansinger to the Zoning Board of Appeals to a term ending June 30, 2023, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsections 4.03 and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
Oh, for sure. This appointment has turned into something it never should have been turned into. Equality is equality. That's man, woman, ethnic background, color of your skin, it doesn't matter. We are all equal. And the fact that there are four women sitting up here tells me the residents of this city have chosen female representation. I think that some of the things that I've seen on Facebook that tell me that we have decided, I want to know who we have decided to change their minds. This was a 6-1 vote going toward bringing it back for a second vote. It's a two-step process. So, I want to know what went on behind closed doors that a press release by one person said, "We've decided," because I wasn't approached about it. So, don't use the royal "we" and include me, especially after it goes out, and members of this, of the community are lumping us all together as if we've done all of this. I wasn't a part of it. I believe in equality. I know that discrimination has, has no boundaries. It has no boundaries. There's no such thing anymore as reverse discrimination. It's discrimination. Man, woman, it could be gender, sexual orientation, race, color of your skin, it's discrimination. And that's how I feel, because we are all equal. We all come from the same two people, if you are a Christian. So, we are all equal. So, the reason why I nominated Mr. Hansinger three weeks ago was because I was going through some paperwork at home that's city business. Some of it's confidential. When I got to the binder that had all of the applications for the last opening that we had on city council, I went through them, and I don't really know the man, I just knew his presentation style. And at the top of his page, I put, "Would make a good commissioner." A few months ago, his name came up to be, that he was nominated, or it was a suggestion nomination by our city planner, that he had worked with him in the past and thought that he would be have, he would be a good person for this particular commission. At the time, we were doing some changes as far as putting liaison, liaison member in place, so it didn't happen. But now the opportunity is there for it to happen. And in speaking with our city planner, who has said to me that he feels that Mr. Hansinger would be a good addition to this committee, I'm not going to change my mind. And the rest of the "we" people can either vote it up or vote it down and go from there. But it didn't have to be this way, and it shouldn't be like this in the future. You're absolutely right, Mr. Jefferson. You're absolutely right. When we look at applications, it's black, black ink on white paper. You don't know if it's a man or a woman sometimes, because it could, could be a Chris or a Pat. And that's how people get appointed to the commissions. I think I made a good choice. I think I'm listening to the right people in that choice, and hopefully Mr. Hansinger will be appointed tonight. Nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. I am in full support of Mr. Hansinger's appointment tonight. I have to say that what happened at our meeting three weeks ago pretty much caught me off guard. The reason given for not wanting Mr. Hansinger, but there wasn't another candidate to bring forward at that point. So, at that point, a member of council went out seeking someone that did not fall into a certain category, and I take real issue with that. As Mrs. Zarco said, when we get those applications, there's no race, there's no sex, there's nothing on there to let us know what those residents' status is as far as any of that goes. That is as unbiased as we can be on this board when choosing someone. The recommendation by Mr. McLeod for, for Mr. Hansinger's appointment in the past resonates with me as well. This is someone that has, he actually was on a border commission in the past and isn't currently on a border commission. So, he has a reputation of being able to So he has a reputation of being able to work professionally. And, um, he, he did a good job and he, I think he is fully qualified. He meets the requirements. And I think the day that we start cherry picking candidates for some of these boards and commissions based on, um, sex or ethnicity, um, is a sad day. I think we need to stay unbiased. This is a nonpartisan board up here. We need to keep that in check because when that is not kept in check, special interests come before this city. And we are here to do what's in the best interest of every resident of this city. That's the oath I took and that's what I live by. So I am very comfortable with Mr. Hansinger. And it's nothing against any other candidate that may be brought forward or is, would have been brought forward. No other candidate was brought forward. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
I would just like to add to what my colleagues have said. I also look at the fact that they've been here, lived in the city for a year. And of course, their interest in the border commission, but also their voting record. If you've never voted in a city election, I'm not gonna vote for you to be on a border commission. If you've never voted in an election, you're a registered voter, but you've never voted, I'm not going to vote for you on a border commission. So as far as I'm concerned, I don't care if you're male or female. The application doesn't tell me that. Your name isn't going to tell me whether you're male or female. It's not going to tell me what your nationality is. Again, resident for one year, the fact that you are a registered voter and the fact that you exercise that right and what your interest in and what you want to promote for your community, that's what I look at. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Saroski?
This is a really hard decision for me. Very hard. I have to agree that we need more women. I'm a woman. I think that my, my opinion is as good as anyone's and I certainly speak it quite freely. But I also understand there's a couple of different differences between appointing an election and your representation. We are, as you can tell, four out of our seven members are women. And we've been voted in by the, on by the people to represent them. I represent the gays. My uncle is gay, has been gay his whole life, obviously. He's been married. I represent those interests. I don't, I'm not gay, but I still can represent those interests. I represent men. I have five men in my immediate family, all boys, and my husband. Well, okay, so he's a boy too. And I love them to death. I represent their best interests. My interests do not supersede theirs. Their interests do not supersede mine. I represent, and I've said this before, African Americans. Who knew? I actually had some in my, my history. I didn't know till I was in my twenties. But I also represent Muslims because I care about their, their beliefs and their ability to freely, sorry, believe what they believe and to, to practice their faith in any way they choose. So my specific gender, sexual orientation and ethnicity doesn't come into play when I represent the people of Sterling Heights. I represent everyone. So that's what makes this hard for me. And I am going to, um, say that I, I do believe that we should never cherry pick our candidates. If we don't like our applicants, we don't have to vote for them. But we don't, but choosing not to pick them because of their ethnicity really does bother me. Or their race really does bother me. Because we can't do that and be true representatives and true voice for the city. So while I would love to have every woman in this town, city, community, apply for, for positions so that then we have a very wide and every, you know, multiple blacks, Muslims, gays, lesbians, transgenders, apply for these positions so that we have options. We didn't have an option. Mr. Hansinger was the one name that we had. And I don't believe that we should hold off, hunt somebody else down because they don't fit the position that we want to be, to, to fill. We don't have something in our minds that think, we think needs to be done. I do know that I, I've been wavering back and forth on this. It seems like it could go either way. And, and I do, the one applicant, the, the, if we do vote Mr. Hansinger down, there's another applicant. She's already on a commission. So pulling her from one to put into another place doesn't make sense to me. She's already representing us as women. She's already doing what we say that we would like, but she's, she's been chosen for her, not because she was a woman specifically, not because she has any other ethnicity or any other beliefs, but because she was a good candidate. And I think that that's what we need. The good candidates, we, we pick. Black ink on white paper, as Mrs. Zarco said, and that's what we look at. Mr. Hansinger, I did watch his presentation both to the ZBA and to the other, and to council when he needed to be here. So he is a very articulate, very intelligent man. He had a very good point on, on the issue that came before the ZBA way back when. So I am going to say, although I had been talking, I had not made a full decision. I'm going to, um, support Mr. Hansinger. And it's because of the fact that I'm not cherry picking. I'm, I'm going to expect that he will represent the rest of the citizens as, as well as I expect the rest of us to represent them. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Saroski. Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, inclusivity starts with us. It's, it's on the council to go out and find candidates for these positions, the city too, and then to put them on boards. In a city of a hundred and thirty-three thousand people, fifty-one percent which is women, it shocks me that we can't have or find a female candidate for one of our major boards. You know, the two major boards we have here in the city are the planning commission and the ZBA. There are seven members in the ZBA and there are nine members in the planning commission. Of those sixteen members, fourteen are men. Two are women. One is a minority woman. Well, so she's a double. It doesn't make any sense. We can stand up here and say the people elected us and this and that. But if we then don't, don't have the city reflect the population, it just, it befuddles me. You know, I looked into Mr. Hassinger because he, he did give a decent presentation before the ZBA. But I also read a, a letter to the editor of the Detroit News where he states that COVID-19 is a myth. And it was made up by liberals to, uh, impact the election of Donald Trump and that he doesn't believe in it. And I question that just for judgment's sake. I think that's insane. We're up here wearing masks and we're sitting in the community center. And to have someone that we're gonna put on a board that makes decisions for the city who doesn't believe COVID-19 is real. It, it befuddles me. But to go beyond that, you know, this idea that we did pretty good in our candidate selection is a farce. We're not doing very good. And we're not doing very good because the minute I brought this to the attention of the city, we had a flood of candidates. We had fifteen or twenty candidates who have applied for different positions in the city because they didn't see themselves up here. And they wanna be a part of it. And we need to have their voices. The idea that on a board that decides zoning issues across the city is gonna be all men, all white men, in a city that is fifty-one percent women, doesn't make sense to me. There's no quota here. I'm not saying that it has to be this way or that way. Mr. Jefferson will mischaracterize my comments all day because he has a bone to pick with the city about his personal issues that go way back. But it doesn't make sense. We need to speak for all of our constituents. You know, the next generation looks up at this council and they say, I could be there too. But the council's just a facade. The, the real people who make decisions in the city, like the planning commission, they're appointed people. They make law. And the idea that we can't find one qualified woman in the entire city to, to put on the ZBA, it's insane. And I won't stand for it. And I've, I've identified a, a lawyer who's already served on the Oba. She's done a year of service to the city and she wants to move up because ZBA and planning are considered the premier committees. And instead of letting her move up and giving her, uh, a more prominent position because she's served the city, we're gonna have a man jump all the way over her from outside of the government essentially and get onto that committee. That committee already contains the son of a member of this board right here, which is just nepotism at its finest. But also, we can't find a woman because we're, we're stocking it with the children of the board members here. And that's just not right. Our committee should reflect our residents. And I guess I have a question for Mr. McLeod, to the chair of Mr. McLeod.
Go ahead. Ask your question.
He has to come to the microphone, I assume. It was suggested here that you nominated Mr. Hassinger as a recommendation to the board because he'd be the best candidate for the city. And I guess, I'm curious what your process is for deciding or, or suggesting to council who should be the best fit for a board, like the ZBA?
Mr. McLeod?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to be clear, when the previous position opened up, that's when I recommended Mr. Hansinger. Since my initial dealings with him, probably three years ago or so, the exact time escapes me. But I always felt he would be a good potential fit for the zoning board of appeals. Very much in terms of, um, rules and regulations of the city. He was, at the time and dealing with him since that time, I have occasional conversations with him regarding some issues around his house. He's always very knowledgeable, very professional. Is always educating himself in terms of what the city's requirements are, what's his policies are and things. So in terms of, when I saw his name come forward, and again, I've always thought he'd be a good zoning board of appeals member. Zoning board of appeals deals with should the city break or not break its zoning requirements. And he seemed like he was very much, again, a rule follower. And I think that the zoning board of appeals, um, with a reason, would be a very stringent body. So that was my thought for, for Dennis moving forward. So, you know, that's, uh, that was why the original recommendation several months ago, again, whatever the timeframe was when that recommendation came forward. So in terms of reviewing it, um, obviously we take a look at, for overall candidates, we take a look at, number one, obviously what their interest is. In terms of, you know, what their educational background is, uh, what their professional background is. We try to find people that, um, have some knowledge, again, depending on whether it's the commission or ZBA. Some knowledge in the development field, real estate field, um, but that doesn't necessarily dictate things. I mean, so we just simply look at the, the potential basis there. Some of them are based on interactions, uh, some of them are based on phone conversations. Some of them are simply based off of applications, so.
I guess to the chair, to Mr. McLeod. Do you believe that our zoning board of appeals and our planning commission should reflect the diversity that we see in our city every day?
Do I think it does or should?
Should it?
I think every board should reflect the city. And however that, however you take that, and it's a relative statement. But I think, you know, everyone that sits on that board is a, is a statesperson for the city. So, um, as councilperson or Mayor Protem, Saroski said, that doesn't necessarily, it's a specific gender, specific whatever. It just simply means that you have the best interest of the city at heart. You know, sometimes there's gonna be, you know, more women on a board, sometimes there's gonna be more men on a board. That transitions over time. It just happens. So it's, you know, again, I, I think it's a matter, at the time, the opening's there. Who is, you know, who the city and ultimately city council feels is the, the best candidate for that position? Whoever that may be, it is.
And, and you believe the current board represents the city well?
You can always, you can always say that the board could have additional women or additional ethnicities, whatever the case is.
Well, I mean, not additional, one woman, a woman, not an additional woman, a woman.
I'm not gonna argue with it, but it's.
You know, Mike, I'm, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just stop you here. I, I'm not sure why Mr. McLeod is being questioned on this. I mean, this is a policy that the city council has to make. I understand if you want his, his, you wanna question him on his background as a planner and how the current board functions. But I, I just wanna be careful about you putting Mr. McLeod on the spot to give his opinion. He's not a represent, he's, he's not an elected official and it's not his position to.
I guess the point I'm trying to make, I appreciate that, is that since he's making recommendations to the board, I would hope that you consider that a board of, of six, of six men and another board that has, uh, of nine, seven men, it seems to be out of balance, especially when, when over half of our population is women. And I don't think it's intentional. I don't think there's some insidious thing going on here where someone's like, oh geez. But I think over time, networks perpetuate themselves. He himself said it already that, you know, he knows Mr. Hassinger because he had an issue with the ZBA that went before it. And now here we are promoting him. And I think that those, those networks reinforcing and, and perpetuating themselves is why we currently have boards that don't represent the diversity I see in our city every day. And I don't think it's purposeful, but I think we need to be aware of it and we need to do something to change it. Now, I, I put on my, when I first ran for office, this is a city for everyone. Everyone needs to be represented up here. And thank you, Mr. McLeod. You can sit down because I'm talking to you. Everybody needs to be up here represented. And I don't feel right now that in our committee structure, we are. And I think that's on us. We've not gone out and found better candidates and more candidates. And just for the record, there was a, a female candidate available for the ZBA, Jasmine Early. Her application was in the file. So the idea that we, there wasn't a woman available is, is not true either. The idea that we can't do better and we can't find better candidates and we have to just go with what's in the file, I think is how we got into this current rut that we are in right now. Where we appoint who comes forward and those networks perpetuate themselves. And then we have a situation where we, we're gonna have a board that's gonna decide all kinds of issues. It doesn't have a voice for fifty-one percent of our residents, essentially. Any member can speak for, for the residents. I think they do a good job trying to speak for everyone. But the idea that somehow a woman wouldn't bring a, a unique voice to this board, it, I think that's befuddling. And especially when we have other candidates who have served elsewhere who want to move up. I mean, isn't that the process that we should have is that people do their duty to the city and then move up and move on? And we're not, we're not, uh, we're not kind of grooming, and I don't wanna say grooming, but getting people the experience they need to be on these boards. We're, we're not doing our part. That's, that's shame on us. But I'll make a point that I want the city to reflect everyone. You know, we just went through, you know, meeting after meeting about inclusivity and diversity and how we're gonna do more for the minority population here in Sterling Heights. Not even the minority population, the majority who are women, their population. And to have us turn around and say, well, tough. It's, we're not living our values. And I will make a point to just keep on fighting this fight because even if I lose this vote today, I know we can do better and we need to do better. And those fifteen or so people who put in applications since I, I brought this to their attention, they know we can do better. We need to do better. And that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. And, um,
Mayor Taylor? Could I have a second bite at the apple?
Yeah, go, go ahead, Mrs. Saroski.
And I, I just wanted to, it's not, I'm not changing my vote. But I did wanna say something. We did not have another, Mr. Hansinger did not leap above any other candidate. There weren't any other, other than Mrs. Early, who, um, was not at the moment considered. But be that as it may, he did not leap ahead this other candidate that may have been approached or that, that was approached. He was the candidate. And to go out and seek somebody else to fulfill a certain qualification, that's the problem that I have. If this lady had volunteered and said, I really wanna get involved with the ZBA. I really wanna be involved and this is where I wanna be, then that would have made sense. But to seek someone out for a specific qualification, to place them, did not make sense, does not make sense to me. And as I did say, and I do appreciate Mr. McLeod for reiterating this, as far as all of this, all of the commissioners, they have been truly vetted as far as we've, most of them I've talked to in every commission that we've, that I've, commissioner that I've appointed. And they do take to heart what they're doing and they do try to represent the city, not just their own personal, special interests. I'm not up here to represent my special interest or one interest. I'm here to represent everybody. Most of the, and I know all of us are. I know all of us are, even though Mr. Radke and I are disagreeing at this moment, I do know he has the best interest of the city at heart. And so, I just want to say that though, Mr. Hanzinger did not leap above anyone, that that person had not applied. And that's the difference. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. I'm going to say that I really take exception, Mr. Radke, with you bringing up a personal opinion of a volunteer, a private citizen. I'm not saying I agree with his opinion or don't agree with his opinion. That's not for me to judge. But do you really want to open the can of worms of some of the postings of some of the current sitting members on some of these committees? Because that's what you're doing, by bringing up and reposting an editorial or an op-ed of Mr. Hanzinger's. Whether you agree with it or not, I probably don't agree with a lot of opinions on board and board or commission members. But that, I think, that really, I take exception with. You were belittling him. This is an instance where we have volunteers, we're trying to get volunteers, and a member of this board is belittling a volunteer or a potential volunteer because you have a difference of opinion. I take exception with that. I'm not saying that I believe, I have my beliefs about COVID, but I'm not going to sit up here and belittle a resident for having a different opinion than I do about COVID. And that's all I have to say. Mayor Taylor?
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt.
Mayor Taylor?
Mr. Radke?
I'm not belittling an opinion. I'll say this, science is science. COVID-19 is real. The idea that it's not, is not an opinion, that's just false. And the idea that that should be something that we shouldn't consider in the qualifications of a candidate, his own stated opinions, he didn't say it to someone at his house, he didn't say it in private, he wrote to the newspaper so everyone could read his opinion. So, the idea that his public statement is somehow not, not able to be brought forward in a public forum is silly. And beyond that, I want people to be making decisions for the city who I can trust that their decisions are going to be made for the right reasons and based upon facts. That's what the ZBA does. They base their opinions on the facts in front of them, the case, how other decisions have been made in the past. And if I can't trust someone's judgment, I don't think they should be a ZBA member, whatever the reason. All I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. This is, anyone else want a second, second turn? You only get two.
I'm not going to say anything else. I think enough has been said about this. And as soon as you speak, Mayor, can we call the question?
Well, we're going to give Mrs. Kosky an opportunity to make some comments, and then I get to go, I get to go twice.
You get to go, well, I think enough has been said on this. Can I just, just one more statement? You know, we encourage people to get involved, whether it be at, say, our cultural exchange, it could be at, in the, well, now, now it's tough. I mean, you just meet them in the grocery store. But we encourage everybody to find a spot that you're going to feel comfortable in. It was just a few weeks ago that Mrs. Schmidt and I got an invitation to tour Cassidy Steel. And while we were there, we were talking to the CFO who happens to be a resident of Sterling Heights. And we encouraged him and we said, what would you be interested in? You know, look at all of the different commissions that we have. Fill out an application. I mean, but I don't want, I guess, I want to, I don't want to stack the, say that, where I'm only going to ask people that I like to sit on a board. I think there are people that have, that have their application in, I'm not going to disagree, that maybe they don't have my opinion, but they shouldn't be, they shouldn't not be appointed. But you also have to have the votes to be appointed. So, but this, I think we have kept this process pretty much on the straight and narrow. I don't feel it, that we've discriminated against anyone, and I certainly don't want to start doing that. So, you know what, I'm glad that maybe we've had this discussion on this particular appointment, but I really feel that Mr. Hanzinger went through a lot in order to get, hopefully, this appointment this evening. And I think that he's going to serve us well by all of the recommendations from the people that he's worked with. Nothing further.
Mrs. Kosky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought our purpose was to have representation of the city. And I'm going to sound very childish now. Butcher, baker, candlestick maker, doctor, lawyer, Indian chief. That's what the city is made up of. And that's what our board should consist of. Bringing different experience, knowledge to our board commissions to be able to help make the proper decisions for the city. Not the color of your skin, not your sex, not your religion. The fact that you live in the city, you've been here, at least to you, the fact that you take an interest in your government, that you are a registered voter, that you vote, you make your voice heard. We don't go down the boards and commissions and say, okay, this board is composed of seven people. We have to have one female that's gay. We have to have one male that's homosexual. We have to have one black. We have to have one yellow. We have to have one green. We have, that's not the way it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be the knowledge, the training, the experience that you have, that you are willing to share with your fellow citizens of your city. Help make your city better. That's what your boards are supposed to be composed of. I've served on this council where I was the only female, the only female. The rest were all men. Now, it just so happened that we have four females and three men. Should we eliminate, eliminate some of the females? Because we have to have that balance. Or maybe we should say, okay, we have to have Moselins, we have to have Caldans, we have to have, and go down the line. That's not the way it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be the people that care, that have an interest, they have something that they want to give back to their community. Ask a candidate, why are you running? I want to give back to my community. Why do you want to be on a board or commission? It's not the color of your skin, it's not your sex or your religion. It's because you have something that you want to offer back to your community. So, when we start picking on these boards or commissions, we should be looking at, what do you have to offer to your community? Maybe you're an expert planner in your private life. Maybe you're a scientist. Maybe you're an engineer. I don't care whether you're male or female, doesn't make any difference. It's what do you have to offer back to your community? And I think that's how we make up a representation of the city of Sterling Heights. All the talent that we have here, let's draw on the talent, not the color of the skin, not whether you're male, female, trans, transsexualite. I think I'm getting my point across. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Kosky, and thank you to the council for their discussion tonight. You know, Mr. Hanzinger, I guess, is a private citizen who asked to volunteer and he's been kind of turned into a sideshow. So, for that, I would say it's unfortunate at best. You know, a few years ago, I asked the council to consider going to a two-step process for certain of the more important boards and commissions. Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals are two of our most high-profile and most important in terms of the type of policy questions that they deal with. I'm not going to say that they're any more important overall to the quality of life than, you know, the Beautification Commission, or the Arts Commission, or the Ethnic Community, or Ethnic, we never, I can never remember.
Ethnic Advisor.
Ethnic Community Commission, which is a clumsily named commission. But my point is that some of these boards require, in my opinion, and in the opinion of the council, it's probably been five or six years, this two-step process where you nominate the candidate at one meeting and they're appointed at the next meeting. And I've always used that opportunity to do a little additional vetting. And I hope my colleagues have as well. The Zoning Board of Appeals is an important board that deals with, as Mr. McLeod talked about, zoning issues that impact, impact property owners. You know, oftentimes, people say that your house is your, is your most valuable asset that you own. And for a lot of individuals, that's obviously true. For business owners, the building that they, that they own is likely the most valuable asset that they might own. And so, these are important questions that come up. And, you know, personally, I've, I've done work as an attorney in other jurisdictions, obviously, not here in Sterling Heights, representing individuals, business owners, people that, that are asking for a zoning variance. And my personal belief and philosophy on it is to, is that it's, I'd rather not have a zoning board that's super conservative on those sort of things. And, and as Mr. McLeod stated, that's what he thought Mr. Hanzinger would be. And Mr. McLeod is certainly entitled to his opinion about what he would personally like to see in a board, and I have no qualms with that. But, you know, but I'm the policymaker and my colleagues up here are the policymakers. And so, to me, I sort of see that already and on our board. And I would think, I would like to see a little more balance. Now, in terms of the discussion we've had up here tonight, I would say both sides make very valid points. We do need to do a better job to have diversity in our boards and commissions. We have to have, do a better job to have diversity throughout our city. We have one of the more diverse cities in the state. We, for a large city, we have one of the highest foreign-born populations in the state. And we are late to the game in terms of recognizing that on our boards and commissions. A couple of years ago, when I have the ability as mayor to nominate candidates to the Planning Commission, there are nine members. And I remember years ago, when it came time to make a nomination, I noticed that there were nine, you know, nine males on the board. And so, I didn't say, well, I'm only going to appoint a female. But I recognize that that was an important thing, to look at having a more representative planning commission. And we had qualified women who had applied, and I'm proud that we've, that I've been able to nominate two of them, that are now serving on the Planning Commission, doing a good job for the city of Sterling Heights. The Zoning Board of Appeals has, you know, has, has seven male members, six male members, as it were. And I think that there is value in having a zoning board that more accurately reflects the makeup of our community. Now, I've appointed members to boards and commissions and voted on dozens, hundreds, hundreds of boards and commission members. And I can tell you, I don't look at somebody's skin color, or somebody's nationality, or somebody's race, or sex, in determining whether they're the most qualified person. But I do look to see if they are the most qualified person. And that's the point of the two-step process. So, I don't have anything, you know, I probably don't have, I'm not politically aligned with Mr. Hanzinger. I read the same comments and, and I'm going to say, you know, I didn't agree with that, but that's not a reason that I would definitely appoint him or not appoint him. I, from counting the votes tonight, it seems very apparent that he's going to be appointed, and I hope he serves well with distinction and does a good job for the city of Sterling Heights. But during the two-week vetting, it was a three-week vetting process, this last, this last three weeks, I identified some problems I had with him and made the determination that another candidate might be better suited for the ZBA. So, I was prepared tonight, and I am prepared tonight, to vote no on Mr. Hanzinger. What I do want to say in closing is that we, as a board, have to do a better job of communicating about these things. Now, it's our responsibility to put people into these positions that represent our community. And what, what happened tonight does not serve to, in any way, further the interests of our city or benefit the 135,000 diverse residents of the city of Sterling Heights. It's unfortunate that this happened the way it happened tonight. And I call on all of us to do better this next time. So, that's all I have, and that's all the discussion we're going to have. So, Ms. Ryska, can we please have a roll call vote? And this is on the motion to appoint Dennis Hanzinger to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mrs. Sirovsky?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
Mrs. Yarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
No.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries four to two. Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is communications from citizens. So, this is the portion of the meeting for anyone to comment on any items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak under communications from citizens? Take you first, Mr. Jefferson.
Charles Jefferson, Sterling Heights. I showed up early today because looking at the Facebook pages, the things, I thought it would be a large crowd out here, but that's not. Mayor Taylor, you still didn't quite answer the question. What are we going to do from this point forward to make sure that what we just discussed doesn't happen again? At this point, I'm calling for you and the rest of this council and Mr. Radke to step down. Not the rest of the council, but to force him to step down. We, the residents of this city, deserve to know that everyone is getting a fair treatment. By him distinguishing that, a certain, he wouldn't have interest in putting a certain race up on a board or a commission is not fair to those, to that race of people. We all know that isn't correct. We don't know how his decisions are going to be going forward from here on out versus other things that we do have here in this city. We don't, and by the discussion we have, which you folks just had, we don't know if decisions you make from now on are going to be the right decisions for the whole city or not. The old saying by Martin Luther King said, do not judge me by the color of my skin, but the content of my character. I've been coming up here to these meetings for over 25 years now. And not one time have you ever heard me ever utter the phrase, I would like to see more white people in a position, or they shouldn't be in a position, excuse, exclude them. I've always come up here and always said, put out there, what are we going to do next? What's, how are we going to reach out to certain groups? How are we going to do things? I never once ever came up and asked for exclusion of a group. So, Mr. Radke, do the right thing. I know you want to do the right thing, because this is where you are. But I hope the rest of the members of council and the mayor, you have to have a plan. I was here when you guys treated Mr. Smith the way you guys treated Mr. Smith for what he done. This is no different from what he did. So, that being said... So, that being said, we, we, we got to do something different. We got to look at things differently. Where us to look differently, Mike Radke has to step down to make this city a better city. We, we can't have that. I, I, I've told people, I grew up in this city, from a little kid all the way up. And I could, I can goddamn tell you that some of those people, they did not want me in the places I was at. But we strive, we made it through. We made this city better for all the people, all the people. Just not one, not calling out one group of people, saying we wouldn't appoint them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Thank you, sir. Ms. Ryska, is it just going green to red?
It didn't, sir. I did not have the sum up on it. It's corrected now.
Okay, thank you very much. No problem.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is John Matthews. I live by 15 De Quinder. And I want to talk a little bit tonight about setting an example. On February 29th, the same day this building was open, that's back when I got married, and it feels like it was forever and a day ago now because of the virus and everything, but really, it wasn't that long ago. And just after our students' graduation in a parking lot, my husband and I talked about things and what had gone by, and it was amazing, we weren't divorced yet and everything like that, four months of being locked in our house together, you know. And we look back and decided, you know, how crazy things had gotten, and we looked at the road ahead for next year. As a teacher, one of the things I look at is the people my students have to look up to. A lot of them look up to their parents, some look up to, you know, their teachers. A lot look up to their community members, the people that they know and interact with in the community, though. And one of the things I did want to say tonight is it's wonderful that you're setting the example of attempting, you know, to be as healthy as possible and following the appropriate protocols with regards to this virus. Going around the city for the, you know, necessities that I've had to do, I shop for my grandmother, she's 92, has her own apartment, get groceries for her so she doesn't have to go out. You see a lot of people with masks and following distancing procedures, some people don't. I come in here, it's the first time I've been in this building, and I look around, and according, you know, to the statement put out from the state about what our classrooms are supposed to look like next year, apparently this is the classroom I'm going to have to do all the appropriate social distancing, and I'm very much looking forward to that construction project. But for you to do all of this, to set out the masks, to sell these Lysol wipes, and encourage, you know, residents to do the appropriate procedures, that's a, it seems like a small thing, but it's a very powerful thing. And when people see you following those procedures, which is not being done everywhere in the country, that's a strong step towards building a healthier community. So thank you for that. Some other things that have been done to set examples, just came up in the meeting tonight. You know, when you're looking towards the amount of trees and a property and how to preserve them, that is setting an example for the next generation, that they need to take care of their environment, want to be good custodians of the land that you have. That's a proud example that I'm, you know, able to highlight for people when I say, "Why do I live here? Why I buy a house here three years ago?" This is one of the reasons why it's a nice place to live. And even though that may have been a heated discussion with regards to inclusion and diversity, I really think, even though you might not have heard it, I know it's hard when you're speaking sometimes, even though there was a disagreement, and a very pointed one up there, you spoke about it in a mature and adult manner. That would not have happened probably at my family's, you know, house on Thanksgiving. If you want to see that, you can come by, you know, bring something or record it. But you did handle that disagreement in a very profound way, in a good way. That's something that I could show my high schoolers to say, "If you disagree with people, instead of yelling, instead of shouting and using ad hominem attacks, maybe this is a way to express yourself." Thank you for making a good example for this community, and let's continue to do so in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Yeah, I'll take you on my left, in the back.
Hi, my name is Teresa Yuzensky. This is the first meeting I've attended, and I just happened to walk in, and I was struck by all the debate going on back and forth about this particular position. And I thought how sad it was that you only identified one candidate for a position, and two, that you couldn't promote somebody from the planning board up to the zoning board. And it's all very nice to say that you don't see color, and you don't see gender, or anything else. The truth is, we all do. We all have inherent bias. We can't help it, as, as good as people we want to be. And so I would just urge the council and the mayor to think about new process for filling positions in the future. And the way to do that, well, one thing to consider is, you want to have a diverse pool of candidates, and then you pick the best person. But you can never get a diverse zoning commission or planning board unless your candidate pool is diverse. And there has to be a way to think about that. I work in corporate America and do recruiting for accountants, and we reach out to, you know, the National Association of Black Accountants and the Latino Finance Group. I'm accounting, and I hire accountants. So we're always looking for organizations to recruit from, not that we're going to hire everybody that we meet from those groups, but we want them in our pool and get them in the interview room. So there, there should be a process, and I think you probably find citizens willing to work on such a process to get more diversity in your, in your pools of candidates. And it's just sad that this, you basically had one person to choose from. It doesn't sound like someone I would pick, but that's who we're going to get. And it, and it's just, just, it was disappointing, and it, I thought it was naive that people say that they don't really look at all these different aspects, when, when our unconscious bias, as good of people as we try to be, studies have shown, you just look at the name on the resume and you put it in the other pile because it sounds ethnic, or it sounds black, you put it in the no pile, you don't even think about it. So I think there's just a lot to learn in this space, and if you're really serious about having all your committees reflect the diversity of your community, there's probably people that have some expertise in this area that could help you out, and a lot of citizens that would be probably willing to work on that, especially in light of all the consciousness raising that's going on right now. So that's all I had to say.
All right. Thank you very much, ma'am. Uh, yes, you in the back.
All right. My name is Donna Pollam. I've been a resident of Sterling Heights for near 30 years. Mayor, thank you for letting me come out here to voice, I am going to change the subject a little bit. After or during the pandemic, really, I will tell you, I was wondering where Sterling Heights was during the pandemic. I didn't see any correspondence, communication, the city helping, you know, the community. I was worried about that. I did reach out to, thank goodness, Councilman Radke had given me a card when there was a meal at the Country Club. And so I had it there because I have a feral cat issue next door to me. My neighbor was harboring 10 feral cats. And animal control has helped. Actually, Mr. Radke did, Councilman Radke, did refer me to, Mark Vanderpool called me after I did reach out to the councilman. And I have been working with animal control for four months. This is a serious issue. I've been a nurse for near 50 years. This is a public health issue. I have evidence, I have multiple diseases that can be carried by these feral cats that use our house at 15 and Dodge Park as a litter box. Okay? I had gone out in the spring to do spring cleaning during the pandemic and found half a bushel of excrement that I cleaned up from my yard, from these cats that lived next door to me, in this lady's yard. So animal control has been helpful, however, there's a lack of communication. They don't tell me what's going on with the cats. You know, one of the officers did say that five of them have been taken care of. We were given traps, but they've been removed because they feed the cats, so we can't trap the cats. So this is a big problem, I'm told, in the city, and that they need the traps, so we are not able to do anything at this point. I still see them, we see them all the time. We have monitors on our home, so we're able to take pictures, we're able to get, you know, we have evidence all the time that these cats are still roaming around. We have done homework on this. I have the city charter and code ordinance. Actually, my husband wanted me to ask for him, who wrote these? Who writes the ordinance that we got off of the web? Does anybody know? Who actually constructs this? Is it animal control? Is it? I mean, you can look and see what I have, just to help us as to who we're going to contact, because animal control Sergeant Kovalchik, I email him, and even, I've emailed him, I've called him, I've left messages. He doesn't call me. One of the animal control girls will correspond with me a little bit, but I have a feeling it's an unusual circumstance, but we really don't know what to do at this point. I fear, because my husband and I are senior citizens, and we're entering our golden years, and I fear in Sterling Heights for the next 10 years, we're going to be cleaning up after somebody else's cats. I don't see that ending. I know we're supposed to identify the ones that have been released back after the TNR system that we have in this city. Their ears are clipped. I don't know, you know, what's been going on. I don't know what, if the cats are fixed, if these cats, if it's just going to be a, it's just going to be a Ferris wheel for us. And, you know, I try to have pride, and, and, I mean, I should. I've worked a long time to live in Sterling Heights and to maintain our house, and we have that happening right next door to us at this time of our life.
Okay, ma'am.
No animals, you know, our kids are gone. It's a time where we should be putting our feet up.
Right.
Yeah, we're cleaning up after these animals.
Okay, thank you. We've got your information, and we'll follow up with you on it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Do you have my information?
Mr. Radke has it, and he can share it with, with, if, to the extent that we don't. We'll make sure to get it addressed and have somebody reach out to you. Thank you. I'll take you next, miss.
Hi, Mayor, council members. My name is Brandy Wright. I live at 19 and Shaner. I really just wanted to express how much I appreciate Councilman Radke trying to help bring diversity to these boards. I don't really agree with Mr. Jefferson, and I don't believe that he should stand down. One of the reasons my husband and I bought a property, our house here, a year ago, was because we want to raise our daughter in a more diverse community. And I think it's important for our boards to show that diversity as well. I know you said that the man that you just agreed to put on the board is qualified, and that's great, but as the other woman said, if you only have one person in that pool to choose from, you shouldn't just say, "Okay, well, let me go ahead and hire him." You should strive to find other people and make sure it's actually a competitive process. So that's really all I wanted to say. I don't think Mr. Radke needs to step down or resign, and I do think that it's important to bring more diversity to these boards. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Yes, miss?
Um, yes, I am also of the agreement that I do not believe that Mr. Radke should step down. I was very happy that he was trying to foster a, an environment of inclusion. And an environment of inclusion and diversity doesn't just appear. Sometimes it's something that you have to work for. And I understand that we want to pick the best candidates to head up our leadership boards, and that's, we should expect nothing less. But I also know that Sterling Heights is very diverse, and there's lots and lots and lots of diverse people that are excited to be on leadership boards and want to apply for these boards. So what I would like to put forth to the council is I would really, really appreciate it, as a new resident, if you guys would get together and work with the Ethnic Community Council and come up with a comprehensive plan on how you're going to get out in the community and get people to put in applications from minority communities, reach out to the LGBT community. And I hope that you, you know, take the advice of, of the other woman that spoke up here and have trainings and sessions to help, you know, educate yourself and, and educate, you know, but like, if you want to represent these communities, you're right, councilwoman, you were right, you don't have to be a member of that community to represent them. But you need to understand where they're coming from, and to do that, you need to listen to them, and you need to give them a voice, you need to give them a space. So have safe space training, invite members from the LGBT community to come and talk to you, talk to you about what are the current terms that are used, what are dead terms, what does the community, the minority community need, what does the Chaldean community need, what does the Muslim community need? Have those training sessions, those learning sessions, and create a comprehensive plan on how to get additional applications and get those communities, those minority people involved in the community. Please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else on communications from citizens? Yes, sir, in the back.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm not sure I'm at the right meeting, but am I able to discuss property taxes?
Yes, it's, you're at the right meeting. You can talk about anything that was not on the agenda tonight, and...
Great. Okay, I wrote a speech because I'm not really good at public speaking, so here goes nothing. My name is Michael Ramirez. I live near Henry Ford High School. My wife and I purchased our house in April of 2017 for $210,000. Since then, our summer taxes have increased every year and are now over $1,000 more than when we first moved in. It is my understanding that the property will uncap only once after a change of ownership. However, when compared to others in the neighborhood, many did not uncap when there was a transfer of ownership. For some reason, they were not assessed. I have been assessed every year. I have neighbors paying $1,000 less in summer tax for the same house. Why is the assessed value similar, but the taxable value not even close? Looking at my 2020 summer tax, I'm paying over $500 to Michigan Intermediate School District, and according to the 2019 Macomb Equalization Report, the average Macomb County home is valued at close to $200,000. Based on that, the 1.9 millage would cost approximately $190 per year on a home valued at $200,000. So even if my house is valued at 250, let's say, the MS, MISD should only be 250, not 500. I'm just worried that I'm going to be, keep getting assessed for some reason, I don't know why, but I, I can't afford the tax increase every year. It's just odd that other people are getting, getting away with not being assessed, but we see... But we see city cars all the time parked in front of our house and taking pictures. And I don't know what's going on. But I have assessments from every year since we've moved in.
Okay, we, we don't do it back and forth during this portion?
Okay.
So when everybody's had a chance, the council will then have a chance to, to respond.
Okay.
But rest assured, we'll, we'll get your questions answered.
That is it, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion. Go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything for tonight?
Mayor, just quickly, I wanted to follow up on a, a comment made on the consent agenda. The question was regarding whether or not we issue any contracts or work to minority groups. And I want to provide the following information. The city of Sterling Heights is part of the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network. So all of our bid documents are posted on that network. And there are over 1,100 local governments that post contracts on that network nationwide and including throughout Michigan. So our philosophy has always been to make sure that the, the most amount of businesses possible, minority owned and other, women owned and the like, know about the contracts that we're letting or bidding out. So we encourage all businesses to become part of that network. It stands for MITIN. That is the acronym, I should say. There are over 2,600 registered minority or women-owned businesses that submit bid responses on MITIN. So we, we have always resisted local preference ordinances for this very reason. We want as many companies as possible bidding on our contracts. And we do issue contracts to minority and women-owned businesses. In fact, just in the last six months, we have issued contracts to at least three, maybe more. But that's what I know off my fingertips. So it's, it's a very effective network. It's very beneficial to all businesses, especially businesses that are minority-owned, women-owned, or owned by members of the LGBTQ plus community. So we're very proud of our participation in that network and we're very proud of the business that we conduct through the network. I also wanted to comment on the last speaker. We would be happy if, if he stays afterwards. I will leave my card. We can connect and we will run a detailed analysis of your property tax assessment and your property tax bill for the time you've been in your home and make sure that there are no anomalies going on. I don't believe there are. I think it's just a, a matter of updating you, for example, on the MSD millage and the impact that's had on you and so on. But I'll be happy to get with you after the meeting and leave my card. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Koschubski?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
All right, Council, anyone with new business or reports tonight? Mr. Radke?
I would strongly urge Mr. Vanderpool, when he brings forward the, the body camera ordinance here in Sterling Heights, to also bring forward, or body camera orange, body cameras, body camera budget amendment, to also bring forward the diversity coordinator that we had to cut out of the budget this year. I think this meeting illustrated just how badly we need those services and how badly we could use their help. I was up at my cabin all weekend celebrating the Fourth of July just south of Frankfurt. And I watched the TV and, you know, Traverse City just bought 100 body cameras for their officers there. And I thought, man, they're really moving ahead to make sure that everyone is protected in their city. And I strongly urge my colleagues, when that ordinance comes forward, to adopt it. Because it's time, I think it'll protect officers and it'll, it'll protect the residents too. But when we bring forward that, that budget amendment, I think we should also bring forward the refill in the position of the diversity coordinator that was cut from the budget this year. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else on council?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski?
I will try to be brief and a little less preachy than my last moments. But I do want to make a couple of points. So first and foremost, yes, absolutely. We do need to change our process and how we get our candidates or our people who are interested. We need to reach out to our, anybody in the city, both by the ethnic community as well as anyone who is interested in volunteering for our community commissions. So we will need to improve our process. It does happen in June. We, we do the nominations for, to begin usually in a June cycle. And so we do have that timeframe. March through May or even sooner to start reaching out to candidates. That is something that is on us. We do need some, probably a little bit of help as it was suggested for diversity training and inclusion and other things that we need to understand what communities feel underrepresented and what communities we can help get to where they want to be. So I do really appreciate the comments today. I have to say, it's, it's been Zoom meetings have just been, you know, ugh. But I'm so glad to see everybody here. We haven't had this many people and I know that some have left. We haven't had this many residents and this many residents with different opinions and different ideas and great ideas in a long time. And I really appreciate all of you for being here. So I did want to reach out. But I did want to mention to Ms. Teresa Yuzinski, you're right. We are not blind to what people are. But it doesn't necessarily mean that that changes our opinion. So I guess maybe our verbiage was a little bit off. But, you know, I'm a nurse. I deal with every type of person in the entire world. And all that matters at the end of the day is that I'm trying to keep them alive. I don't care if they're the drug addict that's got the heart, endocarditis, that now I'm trying to keep them, their heart pumping and they're on a, on a drip that is very, it doesn't matter how they got there or what they've done as far as, it still matters that that person has extreme value. Yes, other people have different opinions of other things. But truly, the person is the most important, as is the resident, the most important. So that's where we do what we do. Yes, we are not blind, but the differences don't matter. Or we say that they don't matter and I do believe that we all believe that. The differences don't matter. We all have differences, of course we do. But I did want to say, but I do really appreciate all of you guys. It has been amazing. And so the ladies that spoke, please don't leave because I want to give you my cards and I want to get you guys involved, all of you. So there's that. Mr. Matthews, again, thank you. Congratulations. I didn't know you were married, got married, but very good. I'm very happy for you. And so that's kind of where we are with it. And ma'am, with your feral cats? Cats can create a havoc. And I am, as you, I just said, I'm a nurse. So I do understand the public health issue. And please, we will make sure that we will do our very best to help you out with that. And that's all I have today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarowski. Council, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Well, I wouldn't be able to go home tonight if I didn't put in a plug for patios and pights that will happen at Dodge Park. It's sponsored by The Chamber and some of the other local businesses in the area. And I, I don't know exactly how many weeks it runs. But starting July the 16th, there'll be a craft beer company that will be there to, for you to purchase their wares. It's, you have to have a ticket in advance so they can limit the number of people that'll be there partaking. And it's $10 and it does include a drink of whichever company is bringing the beer that week. And so there'll be other refreshments as well. And it's, it's planned to be so that everybody is going to be at a safe distance. And it should be at least something going on that we can probably all do this summer or have some fun and get back to some of the things that are normal. But it, it is good to be back in, in this room. Or, and just because if you saw what City Hall looked like, it's going to be a long time before we're back in there. But it just is good to have the feedback from the residents. It certainly was different with the call-ins and the Zoom meetings. But, but you know what? Kudos to all of our administration and, and the council members because we've been able to move the city forward through this crisis by finding new ways to do things and as well as so many of our residents and businesses. So that's what I'm really grateful for is that we are coming through this in maybe a different way. And I'm just grateful. I'm just grateful to see all of you, grateful that we're all back here. Nothing further.
Mrs. Koski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With council's permission, I would like to request that the city attorney and city manager take a look at our volunteer application and see if it needs to be revised with all the comments that were made this evening, that maybe we need to update it. I'm not too sure. I want to see male, female, and, and so on put on there. But I would be open to any suggestions that they might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
I'm sorry, I changed my mind. I just wanted to put a plug in for the Parks and Recs Department. They are starting next week to have various exercise classes and yoga classes in Dodge Park, socially distancing, of course. So anyone that's interested in picking up that exercise class that got dropped because of COVID and everything being canceled, those are resuming in Dodge Park next week. So go online and you can register online for those, those various classes. There's a limited amount of residents or, or participants allowed so that we can be socially distanced. But get on, get on the website and get registered for those classes.
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mr. Mayor, if I may? Mr. Koschubski?
I'm looking for direction on two issues. One was the budget amendment that Mr. Radke had brought forward to add the diversity coordinator position as well as Ms. Koski's request to look at the applications. I need direction on form, from at least some consensus.
When is the, when is the body cam? Is that coming back at the first meeting in August? Or no, I shouldn't say coming back. But is that amendment proposed for the first meeting in August?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
The Wednesday meeting after the primary?
I think it's August 5th.
Okay. How about this? Why don't we chew on it? And then we could give direction at the second meeting in July? Is that fair on that? And then with regard to the application, can you give any more specific direction? I mean, what, what, what is it? What is it that you're looking for? Because, so Mrs. Koski says she wants you to review and see if there's any changes.
Essentially, report back to council with any proposed changes or status quo as, as it may be.
Okay, Ms. Koski, are you looking for them to do, do like a report like we normally would ask them to review other cities? See what they're doing? Come back with best practices and report in 30 to 60 days?
Basically, that's what I'm asking for. Because with, like I said, the conversation tonight, the information that they want us to judge these applications with are not on the application. So if we're supposed to follow the direction that the audience gave us, we're going to need to put that information on the applications. My question is, is that something that we should be doing? What do other cities do? Do we need to change our applications? So that if Carol is the first name and the last name we can't really pronounce, do we know if Carol is male or female? Do we need to know that? How are we going to make our decisions for future appointments to boards and commissions if we don't have the information? Do we need it? That's my question.
Okay. I guess what I would say is that if the question is, should we have the city administration review our application to determine whether we should add sex, gender, national origin, color, race, sexual orientation, all those things? I would be not in favor of that. No, okay. And I think from the sound of the, but if the question is, is there something, is there a better practice in how we can tweak the application? I don't think that, I mean, it's been a while since I think we've asked you guys to look at that. And I would be in favor of that. And to the extent that you can determine what other cities are doing to encourage a more diverse pool of applicants, I would be in favor of that as well. So is that fair, Ms. Koski?
That's basically what I'm looking for. What do other cities do? Do we need to change or are we good the way we are?
Without any objection, any council, any objection to that? Okay, I think you've got direction on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
You know, we'd like something in 30 to 60 days. But whatever you guys need, just report back if that's not enough time. Okay?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Thank you. But the other, you know, we've been talking about these applications where, you know, are the openings where we might have one or two people. But we have so many commissions that have vacancies that nobody ever applies for. So I mean, those are things I would like to fill as well. Is how do we encourage people to fill those vacancies? And it isn't just, you know, adults. We've got the Youth Advisory Board that we would love to see more children involved in, teenagers. And I understand that right now we couldn't do any recruiting because, you know, schools aren't in session. But we do have so many commissions that have vacancies that we can't fill. And that's another problem. Nothing further.
So I think that's good feedback. And I think that that's, would be valuable to find out what other cities are doing to encourage applications there. I will say, you know, if there's any positive byproduct out of this process over the last three weeks, it has been that there's been significantly more interest in serving on our boards and commissions from qualified diverse candidates. And, and I'll never say that that's a bad thing. We have struggled for years to, to recruit candidates. We've had volunteer fairs and we've posted on social media. And we've, we've done a lot to try to get more people to apply. But for whatever reason, it's sometimes proven to be difficult. There have been a number of people who have stepped up. And, and I think with everything that's going on in the world right now and particularly in the United States, I, I hope that this is an opportunity for people to understand the importance of civic engagement and the importance of their local government. That all of this, everything that's happening around the country right now with regard to civil unrest is happening because of local action. And the local governments are such an important part of, of everybody's life. You know, that your interactions with the local government are when you turn your faucet on, when you take a shower, you know, when you drive out onto your, your road, when you take a walk on the sidewalk. You know, there, nobody, I don't, I don't, I shouldn't say nobody, but very few people understand the importance of their, their local government. And, and, you know, you got to be involved. You got to be engaged. And I'm encouraged to see new people here today. We've been gone for three or four months. And generally, it's, it's the same folks who show up at every meeting. And so to see some, some new folks here tonight is, is really encouraging. And I, I hope it continues. And I hope, and if anything positive can come out of this process, and I know a lot of positive is going to come out of the protests. And I hope it, it impacts the city of Sterling Heights here because there's, there's a lot of, of good we can be doing if we have other voices and other opinions shared with us. So a couple of other things. You know, we are, we are, at the end of this month, I think it's like July 29th, we're having our first meeting of our African-American coalition. And so I'm optimistic that those discussions and those meetings are going to help identify ways that we can do better in terms of our, our candidate pools and hopefully reveal other things that, that we, blind spots that we just don't know about. So I'm encouraged by that as well. A couple of things. I've gotten some calls from folks who read or saw on the news that the city of Sterling Heights is paying for return postage on absentee ballots, which is true. But the news might not have reported that it's just for the general election, not for the primary election, which is coming up in August. We spoke about that at the council meeting. But it was not widely reported in the news media coverage. So to the extent that you're watching this meeting and you had those questions, that's the, that's the reason. It was brought up that Parks and Recreation is slowly reopening. We've got baseball starting soon. Parks, you know, our Parks and Recreation team has done, in my opinion, a phenomenal job to create programming during unique circumstances that could... job to create programming during unique circumstances that could have never been predicted. And so they've done a phenomenal job with that, and they've also done a great job with the setup in here. I want to thank Parks and Rec Director Kyle Langloy, his team, our city manager and city attorney, and everybody who had a hand in getting us back to these meetings and doing it in a way that was safe. You know, we talked a lot internally about getting back to meetings that are public. You know, we have an obligation, we think, as a public body, to conduct our meetings in the most public, transparent way that provides residents with the opportunity to provide meaningful, interactive feedback, but also do it in a way that keeps our employees and keeps our residents safe. And I think they really struck the right balance here. So I'm incredibly happy that we're able to get back to doing this, and I can tell that the public is as well. I think that's all that I wanted to touch on tonight. I am going to leave it at that. So congratulations again, Ms. Riska, a very well-deserved recognition. It was good to see our friend Joe Romano here. He's long since left. But thank you all for coming out tonight and participating in the meeting. We really do appreciate it. Oh, one final thing, just real quickly. Mr., I think it's Ramirez, I'm sorry, I was having difficulty with hearing some of the folks that were up there. So if you bought your house in 2017, and this is an important question because a lot of people are getting sticker shock from their taxes this year. That M-I-S-D millage was a really heavy millage. It's a lot of money to people. And I don't, it was just passed in March, and maybe people thought it was a renewal, or maybe they didn't quite understand. But, so that's, the difference is, you got to look at your taxes, there's two factors that are important, the millage rate and the taxable value. And the reason your taxable value is higher than your neighbor's is because yours was uncapped in 2018. So you bought in 2017, it was uncapped in 2018. If your house is $200,000 and your neighbor's house is $200,000, but your neighbor's been living in their house for 15 years, their taxable value might show that it's only, you know, that it's significantly less, whereas yours gets uncapped at the time you buy it. So it got uncapped in 2018. If you added on anything to your house, now maybe you did, maybe you didn't, but if you did, that could increase your assessment. But if not, in 2019, your taxes would have just gone up by the inflationary rate, okay? And then in 2020, your taxes went up because of the M-I-S-D millage. But as Mr. Vanderpool said, there's definitely an explanation for it. We can walk you through it. It's a complicated process to understand, but once it's explained to you, you should be able to catch on pretty quickly and understand. And, you know, we have, I know, me personally, I've gotten a lot of calls about this and seen some Facebook posts and other messages about the taxes. But there is an explanation, and you're not being targeted. We're not sending, you know, vehicles out to your house to like take pictures of stuff and figure out a way to nickel and dime you. That's, I guarantee you, that's not happening. So now I'll leave it at that. I want to thank everybody, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.